Good afternoon, everybody. This is Friday, August 16th, 2024. This is a regular meeting of the Commissioners of the City of Rehoboth Beach. We're live, City Hall Commissioners Room, Second Floor. I'd like to call this meeting to order at exactly 2:00 PM. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to start off with roll call. Commissioner Don Preston.
Here.
Commissioner Tony Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Ed Schonowski.
Here.
Commissioner Patrick Gossett.
Here.
Commissioner Tim Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Bunky Markert.
Here.
Mayor Stan Mills is here. We have a full complement of the mayor and commissioners are able to formally have a quorum and conduct business today. With that, I'd also like to identify staff that helps make the city run, help make this meeting run. I'm going to start back here with Matt Janis, Building Official. Raise your hand. Scott Cantalupo, Code Enforcement Officer. Corey Shenko, Building Official. We've got, on this side, Chief Keith Banks. We've got Lynn Cohen, Communication Specialist. Evan Miller, Assistant City Manager. We've got City Secretary Ann Womack, City Manager Taylor Tetter, City Solicitor Alex Burns. And I think I got everybody. Yes, we do. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. We're going to give a little thanks to those that are watching virtually. We want to thank you for watching and also thank you for those that show up in person. You know, as you've been here before, if you've been here before, you know that we provide an opportunity to speak on topic. There is a three-minute limit. We have a new timer we're going to try out today. And those are for on-topic. And then also, we have an additional comment period at the end of the meeting. That's for topics off-topic, also the three-minute limit. Support documents, those are documents that support our individual agenda items are embedded in the agenda when they're received a sufficient time ahead of time. And if you go to the city website and look up the meeting calendar and pick the meeting date of today, you will be able to access all those support documents. With that, I'll use the mayor's prerogative. The clear space item is way down in the agenda, and I am going to move it up to Agenda Item 12 under the Community Partner Report so that they can present it and get out a little earlier than the rest of us. With that, I'd like to move on and present a proclamation recognizing National Seniors Day. Do you want to join me up front? This is a proclamation about National Senior Citizens Day. We couldn't get any senior citizens. The ones who beat by weren't able to come here, so I guess I'll claim.
You don't?
I'll claim. I would be included in the drawing position. National Senior Citizens Day, August 21st, 2024. Whereas National Senior Citizens Day was created on August 19th, 1888, and whereas seniors are present in all aspects of our lives, they are our parents, our elders, our grandparents, our teachers, our volunteers, our mentors, our neighbors, our coworkers, and ourselves. And whereas National Senior Citizens Day focuses on celebrating and recognizing the contributions made by seniors to better their communities, families, and workplaces. And whereas everyday seniors right here in Rehoboth Beach make a big difference, and we value their contributions to the community. And whereas many senior citizens are embarking on second careers, giving younger Americans a fine example of responsibility, resourcefulness, competence, and determination. And whereas senior citizens are serving as volunteers in various programs and projects that benefit every sector of society. And whereas we owe senior citizens our thanks in a heartfelt salute, we can best demonstrate our gratitude and esteem by making sure that our community has good places in which senior citizens can participate to the fullest and can find the encouragement, acceptance, assistance, and services needed to continue to lead lives of independence and dignity. Now therefore, we, Mayor Stan Mills and Board Vice President Patrick Gossett, do hereby proclaim August 21st, 2024 as National Seniors Day, proclaimed the 16th day of August 2024. Give your senior, give yourself a round of applause.
Every day.
I don't think that was a round. When is it? With that, our next item of business is correspondence. Correspondence, when received a sufficient amount of time ahead of the meeting, is embedded into the agenda. We have 10 pieces that were embedded in the agenda. Of those 10, we're not going to go through them because they are available, again, as support documents within the agenda for you to bring up on the website and see. But within the 10 received in time, they were all in reference to, all but one were, nine of them were in reference to trailer support. One of them is in reference to support of the basement ordinance. We did receive 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 letters late. They were not embedded in the agenda. Of those, four of them are on trailers, two in support. Two were questioning the inclusion of campers as a trailer. And one had to do with a supportive, trying to keep clear space in town. They will be embedded after the meeting at some point, so you can read those. With that, we've got meetings to, meeting minutes to approve. We have seven sets of minutes, and they are the following. Executive sessions held on October 24th, 2023, December 4th, 2023, July 19th, 2024. Regular meetings held on July 21st, 2023, July 19th, 2024. Special meeting held on July 19th, 2024. And also workshop meeting held on March 8th, 2021. Are there, I think we can all vote on all of these. Are there any corrections to the minutes that need to be made? If not, I would take a motion to approve the seven sets of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Don Preston and a second by Commissioner Tony Sharp to approve the seven sets of minutes that are noted in front of us. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, and the minutes are approved unanimously. Thank you very much. With that, we're going to move right along to City Managers' Report. Taylor?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners and members of the public. If you haven't heard already, I'm proud to share that the Sussex County Life Saving Association team took first place this past weekend at the National Lifeguard Championships in South Padre Island, Texas. This championship is the Super Bowl equivalent in competitive lifeguard surf racing. Seventy-nine lifeguards from nine area beach patrol agencies swam, paddled, rowed, and ran in an individual and relay event. Twelve championship team members are from the Rehoboth Beach Patrol. This is Sussex County's first, and I'm sure not last, national championship. Until now, the lifeguards from only two states, California and New Jersey, had won the national championship. Moving on to street aid expenditures, we had a street aid expenditure of $11,329.78 that was paid to Delmarva Power this month. Moving on to the Beach Patrol project, coming up over the next couple of months, weeks, couple of weeks, a modification for a sewer drain line for grottos will get underway. And after that, rebar tie-ins will occur, followed by a large concrete pore of the foundation on the south side. Additional temporary lights have been installed along the top of the construction fence on the south side of Baltimore Avenue sidewalk and along the boardwalk for greater visibility. Rehoboth Reflections. The deadline for the city's annual photo competition is fast approaching. September 6th will be the last day to get your photos in to be considered for the city's 2025 calendar. Photos must be high-resolution and landscape or horizontal, not vertical, to be considered for the calendar. And submit up to three photos at cityofrehoboth.com/rehoboth/ reflections. King Charles Pilot Project Survey, another deadline reminder. The last day to complete the survey related to the traffic calming pedestrian safety pilot projects that have been utilized on King Charles Avenue this summer is September 2nd. You can find the survey on the Traffic Study page at reachout.cityofrehoboth.com. And finally, next week, city staff will meet again with representatives from Sussex County and Lewis BPW to discuss the status of their responses to the information requests made during the July 8th Commissioners Workshop Meeting. Sussex County and Lewis BPW are finalizing these responses and plan to present them at the September 9th Commissioners Workshop Meeting. City staff is currently identifying potential engineering consultants to conduct a risk and financial assessment of the proposal. I'm here for any questions you may have.
Questions by the Commissioners? Commissioner Gossett?
Just a comment. I just want to express my appreciation to all of the staff who worked the election this past Saturday. It is a call of duty above and beyond, but they handled it very successfully and without any incidents. And I just want to express the appreciation for them taking the extra day of Saturday to work. I know they get a day off for it, but still, it's a very involved process, and it's handled very well.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we'll move on to the.
The City Manager could tell us about the state road lift station. That's kind of significant.
You want to say anything?
It appears to be finished.
The state road lift station, it is nearly finished and will be online soon. But they are, they are finishing it up, yes.
Thank you. With that, we're going to move on to the City Solicitors' Report. Alex?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioners, members of the public. This past Wednesday, I received a letter from Richard Forston. It's regarding the appeal of a planning commission decision number 1221-05 to Rehoboth Avenue Site Plan Review. It's commonly known as the Bellhaven Proposal. That appeal has been filed, so sometime in the fall. The Commissioners will strive within 60 days to hear the appeal, so more to come on that one.
Thank you. Anything else? That's all. With that, we're going to move on to the departmental reports. The standard monthly reports are embedded in the agenda, so we don't take time to go over that. You can access the support documents and read all about it at your leisure. However, we have added individual department reporting for more in-depth reporting. And the individual department this month is Parking Department. Evan?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. I am here to present a briefing on behalf of the Parking Department. June Ember would have loved to be here with me, but she was actually out of the office for an appointment. So I'm happy to present this information. This is actually a project that, or a briefing that is near and dear to my heart. And I'm going to ask if you could please switch the controls over to the lectern. Really, the intent of this briefing is, as the Commissioners may know, we, at the end of the summer season, we do an end-of-season briefing to you all. That is usually where the Police Department comes, we have lifeguards come, Parking Department attends, and we sort of provide you a summary of the summer season, how it went, what challenges we saw, what opportunities we think we might want to address in the future. We talk, at least in the Parking Department briefing, a little bit about some of the revenue. That isn't the intent today. The intent today is really to focus on our Parking Department program. So we have invested capital funds, roughly $1.5 million, in the Parking Department, purely just capital improvement projects over the last four to five years. And so the intent of this presentation is really just to provide you with a briefing on really what the public and certainly the Commissioners received for that money. We've put significant effort and capital investment into our department, into our operations, into our software, so this presentation is just to cover that. So I will be brief. The agenda is really just to, as I said, go over the history of our metered parking program. This is just recapping the parking program that existed really prior to 2019, when we started the implementation of a lot of these capital projects. We'll review the improvements to the metered parking program and discuss some of the current and future capabilities that we're looking at, and then just briefly touch on our future goals. And that's really as it relates to our parking permit program. So as I mentioned, the parking meter program, the history, many of you who have been here for a while know that we had various providers of parking meters. We had three parking meter providers. We had Dunkin', which were the single-head meters. You could only feed coins into those meters. We had IPS meters, were actually meters that we leased. We did not own those parking meters. And those were also single-space meters that accepted credit cards. And then finally, we had Parkion meters. Those were multi-space meters, and they were located on Rehoboth Avenue. These are three of the four providers. The fourth provider that we had is Park Mobile, which is a separate mobile payment provider, which I'll talk a little bit about later. So really, we had four providers that we were working with. That's all separate contracts, that's all separate programs, that's all separate enforcement mechanisms, separate maintenance responsibilities. So we wrestled a lot with that, with the different providers, the different programs, the different hardware. We also had an inconsistency in the parking program. So we had a combination of the multi-space meters, but also the single-space meters. So I think all of you recall, you know, back when you used to pay the meter, you'd have to look for the space number in the parking spot. And then that was, in addition to, on the avenue, we had the multi-space. So again, same thing, you had to find the space number and enter the space number. And then finally, in some of the parking lots, we had pay and display. So that's where you go to the meter, you pay your time, it prints out a receipt, and you had to display it. So again, the combination of the multi-space meters, but also the single-space meters. Single-space meters were certainly a lot to maintain because that's one meter per space. This program created some inefficiencies. So we had over 150 park mobile zones in the city. We had upwards of 99 park mobile zones on Rehoboth Avenue, and that is because every multi-space meter on the avenue was its own zone. We also had a combination of physical and digital enforcement. We still have some of that today, again, because we use a physical enforcement system with the parking permits. I'm sure you've all seen the enforcement officers on their bikes, biking down the street and turning their heads to look for the physical permits. In addition to, you know, the inefficiency with just the number of park mobile zones, the physical and digital enforcement, we also were doing upwards of four collections on our parking meters a week. As I mentioned, with the Dunkin' meters, they were coins-only, and the coin canister that the coins fell into looked almost like an eight-ounce or 10-ounce cup. So you can imagine back when we were accepting a lot of coins at the meters, and for the Dunkin' meters, it was only coins. They filled up quickly, so they required collections very frequently. And then finally, the season. Mainly, the season was really just difficult to communicate to the public. The Friday before Memorial Day through the second Sunday after Labor Day, you can imagine how much of a nightmare that was to put on signage, but also to communicate to the visitors, because again, the dates range. So as you all know, we're now May 15 through September 15. These are just a couple pictures I wanted to include. This is Bill Maffei from our Tech Services Department with Ron Snootz, who is a longtime veteran of our seasonal parking department, standing with the last single-head meter pole before it was removed. So again, this effort really helped to not only clean up our providers, consolidate our services, but also eliminate a lot of the street clutter that came with the single-space meters and all of these poles. And then finally, this was our crew on the beach at Surfside Place as they removed the last single-head meters for the end of one of the last seasons. So the parking meter program today, we have focused on standardization. So we now use a manufacturer and provider, T2 Systems. T2 Systems provided our hardware, so that's actually the parking meters themselves. They provide the software, and I'll talk a little bit about the software in a minute. That is our parking meter configuration, but also the website that we use that gives us real-time data on our parking meters, on collections, on payments. T2 also provides a service called CCS, which is Citation Collection Services, that integrates directly with our software. And essentially, what that is, is once a citation reaches a certain number of days, it gets kicked over to their collection services team, and they try to collect on that citation for one year. Fortunately, one of the great things about that program, as I mentioned, is it integrates into our software now, so we can see real-time whether it's with Citation Collection Services and whether it's been collected. But also, the cost for the collection services is built into the citation itself. So once the citation goes to collections, the cost for that service is added to the citation. So the city receives the full amount of the parking citation or the parking violation amount that's due. And then finally, we have the integration with other providers. So T2 integrates really well with our LPR system, which is our License Plate Recognition Program, as well as with Park Mobile. So the hardware component, again, we have Loop Cosmo parking meters. We have 200 parking meters. When we had a combination of single-head or single-space meters and multi-space meters, we had over 1,500 parking meters. So by going to the multi-space program, we've been able to consolidate that down to 200. The map on the right really just shows, a map that I had prepared, which shows the locations of the parking meters in the city. And the parking meters were installed in four phases. So in 2019, we installed 46 meters. Those are all the meters shown in blue. Lesson learned. We started with, you know, Baltimore, Wilmington avenues. That was tough, to roll out a brand-new program in the commercial area during a busy summer season. But we managed to, you know, get through that. 2020, we installed 47 meters. That's all the meters shown in green. In 2021, we installed 30 meters. That's all the meters shown in red. And then finally, in 2022, we installed 77 meters. Those are all the meters in orange, which was Rehoboth Avenue. We were able to consolidate the meters and go from 99 meters on Rehoboth Avenue down to 77 meters on Rehoboth Avenue. Our parking zones, so I mentioned before that we have 150 parking zones, where we had 150 parking meter zones prior to 2019. We have since consolidated that down to 12 zones. And the map on the right is just a depiction of what the zones look like today. And again, really, by consolidating the zones, we help alleviate the issue of paying the wrong zone. But more importantly, having multiple zones creates flexibility and produces data. So what do I mean by that? Having multiple zones allows us to create the flexibility, so we can change time limitations, we can change rates. But it also provides us with data. So we can go into our system, we can add the number of spaces on the first block of Rehoboth Avenue, which is its own zone, and then we can track occupancy mainly from really a duration standpoint. So how long are people paying at the meter? We can track revenue. So it gives us not only the flexibility, but also the ability to really produce this data and also be able to compare the data over time. In the future, one of the things that we are looking at is possibly adding or consolidating zones. As much as we've expanded our zones, we still, on occasion, will have concerns from visitors that they parked in one zone and then walked a couple blocks and paid in another zone. So certainly exploring whether we want to consolidate zones or whether we might need to add zones just to create additional flexibility. So again, going from 150 zones down to 12 zones. Just touch briefly about how meters are paid and enforced. So paying the meter is done by two ways. One is at the meter itself, by coin or credit card, or through the Park Mobile app. The Park Mobile app is purely just a mobile payment option for parking meters. I occasionally hear comments about, oh, I paid the Park Mobile meter. Park Mobile is simply just the mobile app. It's the mobile payment provider. The meter is the meter itself. And again, that's the Loop Cosmo provided by T2 Systems. Meter enforcement, again, we do it two ways. One is through the LPR vehicle, which is shown there. It uses two cameras that are mounted at the top of the vehicle. As we ride past a license plate, it scans that license plate and it checks for paid time. From there, officers can issue a citation. We also do it by handheld, so I've shown a little picture here. And that just shows you, when we pull up one of those 12 zones, we can get a listing of all the paid license plates in that zone, how much time is remaining. The yellow would show if they're getting ready to expire, and then the red is expired. So we can pull up, we can search by zone, which makes enforcement a little bit easier. We can also search by license plate, too, if there's a certain license plate that we're looking for. On the meter configuration side, we use BOSS. BOSS, again, is a T2 product. It allows us to create and manage parking meter configurations. This has been great because in the past, we were essentially paying Parkion, or what then became Flowbird, to configure the parking meters the way we want it. At some point, I took over the configuration of those meters. It was very difficult to do, but now with the BOSS software and these T2 meters, it's much easier to configure those meters ourselves. So we brought a lot of that configuration in-house by doing it ourselves. And again, the configuration allows us to establish rates, days, hours, but also how messages are displayed. So you'll see here that this is actually a screenshot from inside of BOSS. This has our intro message, our exit message. As you can see, we're really limited on the text, so how many characters we can use. So we try to convey the real, what we think is the most important information. When meters are enforced, the head-in-parking requirement, the rate, and then that payment is through cards and quarters. And with the display, we do have some flexibility, so we can tailor the message. We can also change colors, display time, so how long the message displays, languages. And I'll touch on this later, but we did add Spanish as a language this year on our parking meters. And one of the things that we're really excited for is the latest version of BOSS, which they're piloting right now, allows for the integration into Outlook Calendar. So we currently use Microsoft Outlook. And so right now, with BOSS, it's a computer program. We have to log into the program on that computer, do the software configuration, and then send it over to Digital Iris, which I'll talk about next, before it's sent to the meters. But the latest version allows us to just schedule it directly through Outlook Calendar. So that's a really exciting opportunity that we're going to be looking at. Digital Iris, so Digital Iris is really our backend into the parking meters. This gives us real-time data on the parking meters. So here is a dashboard. You can see the dashboard, the way that I have it set up. This is actually a screenshot from my dashboard. I have one widget that shows me how many pay stations have alerts. Alerts is, there's a paper jam, or it's out of paper, or the coin acceptor is jammed, or it hasn't communicated for the last 30 minutes. So that tells me real-time alerts. It also shows me a map of which pay stations have those alerts. It provides some data on revenue by day, also over the last 30 days, over the last week. Also, an interesting thing is, it shows average duration by location. So you can see the locations are actually our 12 meter zones. And I think the interesting thing to point out from this is that the average duration by location is just over two hours. I think there's this sort of perception that people are paying 12 hours at the meter and they're going to the beach. Well, what this shows is that, again, the average duration at the meter, the time that people are paying, is just over two hours. So a lot of good information, I think, that we're able to use, certainly to help make decisions, but just information that we have sort of at our fingertips. It has the abilities, the ability to produce reports, so that may be revenue reports, but also maintenance reports. We use this tool to essentially send this report electronically via email to our technicians. So if a meter has an issue, it has to be addressed for a maintenance need. The techs will get an email with that notification, and they're able to go out and do that proactive maintenance on those meters. We can also look up permits, so if we have somebody calling saying, hey, I paid the meter, but I got a citation, we can go in here and also look up their payment. Maintenance, I talked about, so again, we get alerts. We also can do a pay station summary. So every morning, I have a report emailed to the Tech Services Supervisor, which shows all the outstanding alerts on the pay stations. So before 10:00 AM, before the meters go into effect, he can go out and rectify the maintenance needs. Collections is really big. It gives us real-time information on collections, so we're not unnecessarily going out and performing a collection on the meter. So at any given time, we know exactly how much money is in each meter, and we can tailor our collections to, you know, our needs. And then finally, configuration scheduling and pay station management. So as I mentioned, we configure the meter in BOSS. We send the configuration to Digital Iris, and from here, I send the configuration to the parking meters. So I don't have So, I don't have to go out physically touch every single meter. I can send it pretty much directly from this website, and it'll download the configuration within a few hours. Finally, I think the big thing I wanted to touch on was changes in 2024 that we implemented. We did implement a QR code on our citations, so this is an easy way for people to pay or appeal their citations. I did mention that we have added Spanish to our parking meters. There's also other languages available, so if anybody knows French or anybody is fluent in other languages, please let me know, and we can add other languages, too. I do need a translator, though, to add other languages. Fortunately, we have some folks on staff that speak Spanish, and they were able to help me out with that. We have began tracking occurrences of common violations. This is something that the commissioners requested prior to the start of the summer season, when we were entertaining ordinances that would allow us to administratively adjust violation amounts based on certain violations. So, we have added a notes section to begin tracking the occurrences, as I said, for incorrect license plates. So, that's for getting the PC or transposing digits or letters. And then also, for paying the wrong vehicle. That's a common occurrence in Park Mobile. If you have multiple vehicles in Park Mobile, you'll always have a default vehicle. Or if you happen to rent a car and you don't put that car in Park Mobile, again, it's going to default to your primary vehicle. So, that happens on occasion as well. We did reduce the timeframe to appeal citations down to seven days. One of the things I wanted to mention is, we, from the QR code, I think it may be a combination of the QR code and the timeline to appeal being reduced, but we're actually up almost to 700 payments online over last year. So, that's 700 people who have paid a citation over last year at this time. And I think that's a combination of not more citations necessarily, but again, the fact that the QR code is now, it now makes it a lot easier to do so. And again, the seven-day appeal window, people are here, they just want to address the citation, they don't want to have it linger. And then finally, we have done or started to implement the short-term recommendations from the Parking and Transportation Study. We will be talking about that in September. But I did want to show just a picture on the right-hand side. Again, one of those recommendations was to mark the 30-minute spaces with that wording, the 30-minute parking at the entrance of the space, so people see that before they pull in. I added a couple of other photos. These were some of the things that we had brought up at our end-of-season report last year that we've addressed. So, one was some concern with people parking down at the fishing pier on Lake Jar and not knowing that they couldn't park there if they weren't in the park. So, we've added additional language there. And then also, the concern on Lake Avenue near the Henlopen Hotel, where one side of the street is permit, the other side is metered, so better communicating that the one side is permit. So, we've added additional signage there. Finally, what's next? Parking permits. So, we do have some challenges with the current program. We have physical permits. That's permits we have to order every year. We have to make sure we have enough. We physically issue and sell every single permit, aside from those ones that we issue to the property owners, to the businesses. We also, as I mentioned before, have to enforce them manually, so that's by bike, and the permits must be visible. Permits being visible is a big concern sometimes, too, because we get a lot of claims that, "I was running into the house to grab the permit, and you ticketed me while I was running in to grab the permit." Or it may be on the dash, it's hard to see, or it fell off the dash and is now sitting in the passenger seat. So, again, it makes enforcement a little bit challenging. So, the future, we are looking at virtual permits. This is a way to purchase, but also issue these permits electronically and through our existing portal. Some of you may be familiar with this portal. This is the portal that we currently use to pay or appeal a citation. This is a screenshot I actually took from the University of Delaware. Being a University of Delaware alumni, I have purchased parking permits through their portal. So, as you see, they just integrate it just below with the ability to get permits. Some of the challenges that we're just working through is with the current code. So, it's a lot of documentation that has to be submitted, reviewed, approved, and then we issue the permit. So, just working through the code to figure out how best to roll out a program that would work well for us, given the current code provisions. Tourism is also a big challenge, because we have high turnover and not a consistent population. Virtual permits were great for universities, where you have students coming back year after year. They're familiar with the process, they're familiar with where they want to park, what they need to do. But not having a consistent population, somebody may be coming to Rehoboth for the first time, may not be familiar with the permit system or the fact that they have to get a permit online. So, we're exploring ways to kind of better communicate that and implement that. Finally, most important, the biggest benefit is that we are able to enforce this with our current technology. So, again, we're able to enforce it with the LPR vehicles. We're also able to enforce it with the handhelds. One of the things I didn't mention is that the handhelds and the vehicles communicate with one another. So, if we have a street that suddenly has become very difficult to run the vehicle down, we can actually switch over to a walking enforcement with the handheld. So, they're interchangeable. We can either enforce via the car or via the handheld, and that's worked out really well just for flexibility. That was a lot, I'm sorry, but that's sort of just a recap of the investment that we've made in the parking department, where we are, what our current capabilities are, and what we're looking at into the future. So, I'll take any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I have a question. Is there a thought about with the issuing of the residence stickers that we get every year, that that could go virtual?
Yes. Yeah, so, one of the thoughts that we actually tossed around was maybe issuing the residential permits virtually first as sort of like a phase one of implementation. That would give us a good sort of baseline, just to get the program up and running. Again, that addresses our concern about not having a consistent population. When you have residents, you have more of a consistent population. So, we have talked about that, that possibly being the first phase to focus on, maybe the residents and the businesses, roll those out virtually. Obviously, one of the concerns with that is then you will still have a physical permit system for all the visitors. So, we're in a tricky situation where we'd have to enforce electronically, but also physically by checking for permits. But again, we're exploring it, but our thought was to possibly do that as a first step.
It just seems like it's a paper and sticker
Yeah.
thing. I thought maybe we could get away from that.
Yeah.
Plus, it takes five years to fully understand how to remove the sticker from the previous year.
Right, exactly. Yeah, and certainly, I mean, another challenge that we have is we'll mail the permits out, and then we'll get calls. I never receive the permit. So, I think there's a lot of opportunities to make that process more efficient, and certainly, I hope, a lot less painful for the residents.
It's not that big a hardship, but it'd be nice, you know?
Sure.
Evan, thank you very much. I know this has been a pet project for years, for many years.
Yes, it has.
To see the evolution of where it's come from to where it is today is just very amazing, and congratulations to you on doing this. I know it's pretty much single-handedly that you've done this, and I appreciate it. With regards to the virtual permits, though, is there a timeframe that, sort of a drop-dead date or a schedule that you are looking at to make the decision of virtual permits or not for the future seasons, and what would happen?
Yeah, so, I think really, one of the other challenges that we are trying to address, and we were actually just reviewing some of the recommendations from the Parking and Transportation Study the other day, is we have the provision in the code that allows somebody to park in a driveway space without a permit. And in some areas of town, the driveways aren't clearly marked, so it makes enforcement very difficult. Is it the driveway? Is it not the driveway? If it is the driveway, do they have permission to park there? So, there's a lot of different things that we're looking at to make sure that this program works effectively, not just the code, but also just the current markings of the streets. Timeframe, I really want to spend the next year diving into how we can clean up some of those challenges with the markings on the street and the code, and then look to maybe two to three years before we start to roll out phase one of this.
And would that also include in the code? I know, if I'm correct, basically, every parking meter is listed in the code and its location and 30-minute spaces, et cetera. Does this also include a revision or a strong look at that?
Yeah, so, one of the things that we did do was, back as we were installing these meters, we did clean up a lot of the code. Previously, we referenced meter numbers in the code. And the meter numbers, of course, as you remove it, they change. They could change from season to season. One of the things that we do do is we will move meters around if we see that one is not being utilized to its full potential, and we can put it somewhere else, we'll do that. So, we did go through a pretty serious effort as we were installing these to clean up the code, but that would absolutely be part of what we do, is try to remove references to meters. We also have distances laid out in the code. So, with the location, I think of fire lanes, certainly. It references the actual width of the fire lane and feet. Sometimes with 30-minute spaces, it references the number and the number of feet setback from the intersection. So, cleaning all of that up is stuff that we have looked at and will continue to look at.
And would that be done internally, or we would look to eCode to help us with that?
Lately, it's been internally. I think we can do most of that internally. It hasn't been a lot, it's not a big undertaking, so I think we would just do that internally.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much. You have a question, Frank?
Yeah, I have a question.
You have to come to the microphone. Need your name and relationship to the city, Frank?
Yeah, Frank Cooper. I live here in the city, 206 East Lake Drive, everyone knows me. I had a question for you, the virtual permits.
Yeah.
Can't that be integrated with Park Mobile as opposed to having to go onto a separate website? And it would seem like if you could eliminate
Yeah.
people coming into town who suddenly find out they need a parking permit,
Yeah.
if they could just buy it in whatever denomination on Park Mobile.
So, Park Mobile doesn't offer a permit solution, but one of the things that they do do is offer time limits. So, one of the things that we've looked at is at least for maybe the daily permits, offering an option in Park Mobile to just purchase for the full day. But that is something that we're continuing to explore, because obviously, Park Mobile plays such an important role in the meter program, and it's kind of trying to figure out how we roll that out into the permit area, because we don't really do that right now. But as we go to a virtual permit system, as we enforce it by license plate, as we're doing now, it gives us so much greater flexibility to be able to do something like that, an integration.
Do they have limits on the time? Could it be, could you go on Park Mobile and, for instance, buy for the season?
Yes, so, I don't know that they offer seasonal rates, but they do, and again, this is all based on zone. So, if we were to say, "You can only purchase three hours worth of time," you have to set up a zone where that's applicable. So, that gets back into the zone, setting up different zones and giving us greater flexibility, but would all be stuff that we look at. And as we roll that out into the permit area, how that works.
I'm a little confused. Isn't everything that's not metered now a zone, essentially, for hanging sticker?
Yes, yeah, but it's not
So, that's just one zone, right?
Correct, yeah. So, it's not set up as a zone, right?
Right, but you could possibly set it up as a zone
Correct, yep.
at different times?
Yep.
And that would kind of be the easy button for users, I think.
Right.
Thank you, Frank. Don't forget, we have the timer up there. Look that way once in a while.
Property owner in Rehoboth. So, nobody on the commission ever asks these questions, and Mr. Tetter, giving his report earlier, didn't go into any of the data that's really critical to people listening, which is money. And the whole point of the parking project is money, right? So, when we hear about the lifeguard station, by example, just to stay on point, the curious thing is, where are we on budget and where are we on overage? We didn't get that data. On this stuff, is it possible to try to figure out, you know, it's cool, all the technology and stuff is cool, that's great. We have a 14-week, roughly, you know, collection period during the summer. Were we making more money on the coins, or are we making more money on the technology, net-net, of all the infrastructure costs that go along with that? So, some sort of economic analysis on what was versus where we are
Sure.
is just helpful and informative.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's an easy data slice and dice for you.
Yeah, so, the challenge is really with that is, as we compare data year by year, I mean, obviously, hourly rates have changed, so it's difficult sometimes to just look at the revenue. In the past, we also, the commission will recall, we did for a while like a three-hour maximum limit. I think we also had, it was $3 in one zone, yeah, it was $3 in one zone and then $2 in another. So, as we make changes from year to year, it just becomes really difficult to compare, you know, look at the revenue, so to speak, look at some of the turnover and compare it to see how this has affected that. I will say, just purely from an operational perspective, as I mentioned before, just the maintenance, and especially with the lease on some of those meters, we were paying a lot of money to maintain that stuff, to lease those pieces of equipment. So, I think anybody, really, I mean, if you look at the budget and you look at the investment, what it costs to operate the parking department versus what we bring in in parking meters and parking permits, it's a fantastic return on investment. But I think once we're, I don't know that we'll ever be at a point where we have a consistent parking permit or a parking program for several years where we can really do some comparison. But I think now that we've deployed a lot of this technology, we can gather more information, we can gather more data to start to compare a lot of that stuff. So, that's the only comment I'd really offer.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Tetter, I think you had presented, though, a transactional analysis of parking transactions, as opposed not based on revenue, but on transactions, so that that would, if not compensate, but look at difference in the parking rates. Was that not a party report several months ago with revenue report?
Yes, yes, it was.
Yeah. That can be found in the minutes, I guess, that we could look at for interest in the public.
Yeah, that was a huge benefit, again, of going to the Digital Iris program, and that was the reporting function, is we get information like that, number of transactions, which we never had before. And again, because we did like a four-phased implementation, it was really difficult to look back at those four years and compare year to year, because in one year, we had 47 meters. And then the next year, we had over 80 meters. And different programs, different software, but I think we're at a really good position now where we can start to track that information more consistently and compare it.
Evan, did I mishear you? I thought you said, and I, it could be me, I thought you said that the financial part of this would be a more robust discussion in September.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I thought I heard that, thank you.
Yeah, usually, at the end of the season, we will present on transactions, we'll present on revenue. The slide I always love to show is the coin trend, how we've gone from millions of dollars in coin transactions down to, the last time I looked, we're at about $50,000 in coins this year. So, the trend is just astonishing from that perspective. So, again, that goes to the point about collections, right? Now, we've been able to drastically cut down, I think I mentioned, we're down to one collection a week, if that. So, the software's really given us the ability to be more efficient at the way that we do those collections, so.
Thank you.
Without stealing your September
Yeah.
thunder. Are we tracking ahead this year versus last year?
So, again, we went from $3 to $4. Last, we looked at the numbers, it's, we're going to be close to budget. So, trending ahead, we're actually, I think, slightly behind, but obviously, we still have quite a bit of time to make up. We've been really fortunate this year, because we've had pretty good weather. The weather, we did have some pretty nasty days where it dropped off a little bit, but right now, I think the last report we received from Vicki in the staff meeting was it was slightly below last year, the trend.
Rick, name and relationship, and don't forget to peek that way once in a while.
Richard Perry, excuse me, 46 Pennsylvania Avenue. Just a recommendation, I have noticed, and I've been meaning to send you a note, Evan, that there are numerous handicap parking spaces where the person has to park and then has to go and search for the code, because there's no code in front of those parking spaces. That's the case out here, case with the handicap parking space at the museum and others. And I think it would be good, as we're, the city has been focused on ADA, to make that a little bit easier on handicap people.
Yeah, that's helpful feedback. We always appreciate feedback like that, because now that we've got our arms around the technology piece, now we're really focused on the operational efficiencies, so cleaning up code, cleaning up procedures. So, feedback like that's really helpful. Certainly, as we installed parking meters, one of the main objectives that we had was installing them, certainly on Rehoboth Avenue and other areas as close to existing accessible parking spaces as possible, just to eliminate, you know, that walk and that challenge. But certainly, feedback like that's helpful. One of the things that I do appreciate about our relationship with Park Mobile is that they actually partnered with us, and to cut down on the sign clutter, we were able to collaborate with them on the Park Mobile signage, and that's why we have our, some of our rules and regulations on the Park Mobile signage. And they actually paid for all of that signage for us. And they actually paid for all of that signage for us. So that's been a fantastic partnership where we've been able to communicate our information, they've been able to communicate their zone information, payment information, all on one sign. So we've eliminated clutter, but we've also eliminated our cost with installing signs like that. So they're always willing to give us stickers, they're always willing to give us signage, and I think it's just a matter of adding some of the stickers or the signs to the existing accessible parking signs that we have. So that would be certainly easy to do.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Evan. Appreciate it. And I'd like the screen back again, please. Next on the agenda are board and commission reports. They were received from two of the groups and are embedded in the agenda, so we're not going to go over them directly today. Next on the agenda is item 11, committee reports. We have a boardwalk and beach committee recommendation to seek a historic designation for the boardwalk and seek from us what our recommendation is from the board of commissioners for possible path forward. Right here, I'm going to make note that former Commissioner Jay Legree was the chair of this committee at the time this report was made. When he stepped out of office, it left this committee without a chair. At some point, some time went by and I stepped in as temporary chair. And so this report actually preceded me taking over as temporary chair. The intent of this report, of course, is to advise of committee discussion on opportunities for historic designation and the committee's recommendation. And the synopsis of this is that, our conclusion is that more work is to be done, but the committee wanted to advise and get feedback from the commissioners before they invested more committee time moving forward. Members, you can see up here on the screen, committee members are Frank Cole, Steve Carson, Patricia Davis, Honey Fisher, Brian Hancock, Howard Menaker, Craig Thier, and also Jimmy Hordy III. Jimmy, raise your hand over there to be distinguished from James Hordy, who is a member of our audit committee. James Hordy III has been a member, I think, from the beginning of the second boardwalk committee. So he is here and we're tag teaming today. Would you like to start off first and I'll fill in the holes? Or you want me to start off first and you fill in the holes?
Would you ever be preferred?
Oh, no, you don't. You get to decide. If you would take the lectern and I'll tag team play with you, Jimmy.
As the mayor said, my name's Jimmy Hordy. I live at my family's home at 70 Henlopen Avenue, and I've been on the beach and boardwalk or boardwalk and beach committee for a couple of years now since former Commissioner Legree chaired it. And the committee's gotten involved in a lot of different things, you know, with the beach and the boardwalk as the committee name, you know, states. And we really looked into, you know, the boardwalk is such a well-known aspect of Rehoboth Beach. And we wanted to do something special and the committee looked into the different types of historical designations that we could have. We produced a report that is before the commissioner and the mayor, commissioners and the mayor now. As a synopsis, you know, we feel it might be a good idea to do, to lock in what are the key advantages of it through the research that we've done, no matter what level, you know, of historical, you know, marker or significance that you put on it, there would be government grants that would be available to the city for repairs and maintenance and especially if there's catastrophic, like if we had a hurricane and there's been many, many years, as we all know, where we've had a hurricane come in and the boardwalk has just been annihilated in certain sections. So there would be government grants available to the city for repair and/or replacement of the boardwalk, which is always significant. The other factor that we noticed, and again, at whatever level of historical significance we would be placing on the boardwalk, is the tourism. It would be noted on a government site, you know, saying this is a historical site and it could add to tourism brought to the city of Rehoboth for a lot of people to see the boardwalk that we have. I think those are our key. I don't want to go verbatim per the report, but, you know, we put a lot of time into it and I thought, you know, the committee thought before going forward with this, we would like to get the input of the, you know, commissioners and the mayor on this. And if they feel that it is something that, you know, they would like the committee to continue with, we're happy to do it, you know, and just go forward with it.
Thank you, Jimmy. Just to reiterate, the committee strongly recommends the city pursue historical designation status for the boardwalk, three possible levels of historical designation. And one, number one, is a state historical marker. You've seen all these blue markers around town. I think we have maybe seven of them at this point, front of the library, the Lake Gerard Fishing Pier, at the end of Rehoboth Avenue, touting Rehoboth Beach itself and the Surf Line next to it. So that's what they are. How they work generally is you make an application, you find a sponsor in the General Assembly that sponsors it, meaning the money comes out of their funds, so it's free to the entity. And then if it's accepted and you get the funding for it, then they put it into production and work with you on wording and everything. I do remember the, my time as original chair of the boardwalk committee, we talked about historical markers that were coming on board. And one of our concerns was the proliferation of them. We were afraid that in the next 10 years, there might be another 10 of them or 20 of them on the boardwalk. So we were a little cautious about placement of them. But, you know, you've seen how big they are. There's one up at the, also up at the lighthouse up there and everything. So that's one kind of historic marker. Again, application is fairly easy process. It makes note of in there to apply for it. Could be within six months that you get such a thing. The second designation is a national historical place, so that goes up in elevation. And that has certain pros and cons to it. And then the third designation is a national historic landmark. That's kind of the heavy-duty designation there. And I will share with you that I was working with somebody that was trying to get a local entity here onto the national historical place thing. And it was interesting because I was a neophyte at that time. It was hard to understand what it was all about. But the biggest scary thing about it for the people that I was working with was that in their mind, a historic designation meant that they could never modify it, they could never put an addition on it, they could never tear it down, they could never change it. And that's not true for any of that, actually. So I thought that was kind of interesting. So Jimmy, thank you very much. And I think one of the next steps, as Jimmy indicated, is we'd like a nod from the commissioners before we invest more time in going forward with it. One of the things they want to do is a more detailed advantages and disadvantages, including costs of each of the other designations, and let us know, you know, indeed, what are the pros and cons? What's the timeframe? I think one of them could take many, many, many years to get and everything. And there was, I was talking with Jimmy before the meeting, again, this report came before I was chair, and they suggested a committee getting together. And before this meeting, I chatted with Jimmy and suggested that, a reminder that if we did form a committee, as suggested in here with the different entities, then that's rather cumbersome, if you will, because you have to have a chair, you have to call minutes, you have to give notice, follow FOIA, you've got to take minutes and everything. And my suggestion would be for a nod from the commissioners to proceed and let them decide the path forward in the committee. My suggestion is probably to just go ahead and continue committee meetings, but call in members of the archives and stuff or something.
Correct. And I think that was the key that, you know, we were really, we didn't want to, but of course, you know, if the commission and the mayor are in favor of that, I mean, we're happy to, you know, put the time in however necessary, you know, and come back with another report, you know, once we have all the information for time, any costs and things like that.
Right. So again, options could be for the commissioners, do nothing, we're fine with the status quo. It could be go ahead and seek out the blue historical markers and then and/or do additional research and bring it back to us on the historic designation as a historical place or a historical landmark. So open it up for the commissioners.
I just wanted to ask a question. Do we sort of know ahead of time whether or not our boardwalk deserves any kind of superlatives or like, are we the oldest or anything like that? Do we know any of that?
From what I remember with our research, we're not the oldest.
Okay. Second oldest?
In the state or the country. I think going back, and we've looked in a lot of the archives and things like that, and, you know, the state, you know, was able to provide a lot of information. I don't want to say, yes, we are the oldest or the second.
I was just using it as an example, but I mean, I didn't know if, in pursuing this, I mean, I think it's helpful just as an informational feature that you see the sign and you go, oh, you know, this has been here since, you know, that kind of thing, but.
And that is one of our, you know, main objectives. If we could, you know, if we get the nod to go ahead, we will put the time into doing the research, working with the state archives. I know like, the state archives, Hagley Museum, has unfathomable resources, you know, that we could go and, you know, talk to them too, just to make sure. If we were to say, yes, we are the first, second, or third oldest, it's documented and, you know, we can go from that way.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any feedback from the commissioners?
Yeah. First of all, thank you for the work that you've done already. This seems a bit like a no-brainer to me that you should move forward with the research, especially because this is one of our biggest assets, if not the biggest asset, and revenue driver in many ways. Also, the benefits that might come to us in the case of a natural disaster or something like that also are very appealing. So I would suggest that we look at all the levels of designation and see what the benefits are to us and the costs, of course, of doing that. But thank you.
You're welcome. It's been a pleasure.
Anybody else?
I concur with.
Commissioner Shonasky? I'm sorry. He blurted out first.
Thank you. Just very quickly, I'm a bottom-line kind of person, and I read here on page 58 that your really recommendation here is a two-step process, that it's go for a national historic place first and the other designation, which could take up to five years, would be another step. So I thought this was very, very well laid out. It is a no-brainer for me and the bottom line is it should move forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, for the sake of time, I concur with my fellow commissioners.
Thank you.
I also concur to move forward. My question is, though, Mayor, you referenced to, you know, FOIA and minutes and all of this information, that has to take place if the beach and boardwalk committee meets also. So I don't understand that as being a deterrent in that regard. And in the information here, it says, "The details of advantages, disadvantages should be investigated by a task force constituted of one representative of city staff, a representative of beach historical society, a representative of village improvement association, and a member of the beach and boardwalk committee, and a representative of the Delaware Division of Historical and Cultural Affairs." So those are the ones that are most interested in this, so I, and are familiar with that process of both the state affiliation and also national historic landmark and historic place. So I'm a little bit confused as to what, why the difference between a committee and there's no issue in FOIA and minutes and all of that information. So the focus there would be the individuals that are most knowledgeable of this and have dealt with the process before should go forward with it.
Again, my process, preferred process would be to stay in the committee level for the next step. The next step being invite in some of these people individually to be able to better articulate and document what the process is going forward, what the pros and the cons are. And then at that point, at some point, we come back to this commission and say, here's all additional information. Do you want us to actually make application for it? Because if you go to application, then that, to me, that's when that committee or task force process would kick in.
I just, the committee has made a recommendation, and I think we should accept the recommendation of forming a task force.
Do we need a motion or does this an expression of support for this?
I would make a motion because.
Are you going to take part in that?
Yeah.
Tom Gainer, property owner in Rehoboth. Thanks for all the work. Strikes me that the only reason to keep the committee is because it's already pre-baked and the determination will be pre-baked. If you add more people, then you get more insights. But there's also a glaring missing, and again, none of you asked this question, where are the business people that are abutting the boardwalk? Where is the list of the restrictions that come along with all of these designations? We're on the cusp of a potential economic boom on two of the main corners of that boardwalk if we can finally get out of our own way and get these two hotels built. And then we're going to race to do a historical designation on the boardwalk, which will then restrict economic activity. And I'm going to take issue with your comments, Dan, about, you know, none of that's true about historical designation. It's a lot more true than it is less. The restrictions on any kind of historical designation are legion. And none of you asked the question, none of you talked about any of the impact to business people, and there is going to be an economic impact to this, none of which is contained in this proposal. So, you know, early stages, the outcome's pre-baked, you're going to move forward. But for God's sake, take into consideration the main party that is missing, which is the business community and how they're going to be affected. And why are we racing to do this when we are at the cusp of a massive opportunity to renovate, reinvigorate, and economically redevelop the entire core of the boardwalk? This is untimely, in my mind.
If I can respond?
You want to respond?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, just to answer your questions, on the committee, we do have some business people. And we kind of went into, Frank Cole owns the Atlantic Cycles. Frank Cole owns the Atlantic Cycles. He has a. No, but we wouldn't, I mean, we went in and, you know, talked to, you know, different people within there, and that was a key thing. We do not want to do anything that would negatively impact the boardwalk. You know, that's the attractions there. I mean, we wouldn't do anything that would, you know, and if we found out, you know, we would pull back from it. But if there was something that could impact Funland, you know, we just wouldn't do that.
No, no, good to know. And it's not a question of negatively impacting the boardwalk. It's a question of developmental restrictions on any business that somebody may deem, oh, that's a good idea, and it's a backdoor way of doing it. We don't, it's a backdoor way of getting around the code, and we superimpose a layer of all-new restrictions based on the historical designation. That's all I'm saying.
No, no, no. And I follow you.
None of that's in the presentation. There's a parade of horribles that goes along with all this stuff. And as we move forward, there should be an adequate disclosure, which we don't have a history of doing, on negatives as well as the pros, because we've talked about very remote hypotheticals on governmental grants and on governmental money in the event of a disaster, which female money is available anyway, so, and increased tourism, but yet we're also trying to dampen density and trying to, you know, declare war on better tourism. So we need to be consistent in the way that we're approaching the impact of this decision for, quite honestly, an asset that in the first three sentences is missing the rationale of consequentialness that I would think would be part of the sales pitch.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
And the key is we would look at any, anything that could affect anything negatively going forward.
Yes, sir.
My name is Bill Breidrich and I live at 102 St. Lawrence. Unfortunately, every day in my professional life, I deal with Section 106 of the Historic Buildings Act. This building is the result of a loan from the Community Facilities Direct Loan Program of USDA. Today, within USDA, every single loan that gets anywhere near something that is, quote, "historical" has to go through what's called Section 106, which requires a tremendous amount of. amount of bureaucracy and expense that have to do with asking the opinion of everyone you could possibly imagine and how it might impact on them. So you're required through the state historic offices, the state historic properties office, which is in Dover, for them to send out letters to everyone that they want to think about and get letters back from everyone. And it can slow down a project. I'm familiar, coincidentally, with a hotel project in California, which they're now going through, in effect, an arbitration about how they're going to deal with this. So I would urge the committee to familiarize itself with Section 106 of the National Historic Buildings Act. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, it's just that it is, and by the way, this is something, to be perfectly blunt, that I'd like to change, about this, this system of getting input from everybody that you could possibly imagine. You may have noticed recently in the press, there's been something about up and lose around the wastewater treatment program and the existence of artifacts. That's one of the things you have to, so if I was a business owner on the boardwalk, and I wanted to borrow money through one of these USDA programs, I'd have to go through this whole project, and it might be delayed or turned down because of some aspect of Section 106 of the Act. So I don't mean to...
No, I appreciate the input.
I'm not trying to be Debbie Downer here, I just want to make you aware of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Thank you. So it would be good probably to make a motion and formalize the path forward. Bunkie?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend that the Beach and Boardwalk Committee continue its research in developing a plan to, or basically to explore the prospect of historical designation for the Rehoboth Beach Boardwalk.
By way of keeping it in the committee, or...
I would make the recommendation to keep it within the committee at this time.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bunkie Markert and a second by Commissioner Patrick Gossett to authorize the Beach and Boardwalk Committee to continue to explore the historical designation by continuing to do research within the committee.
Mayor, just, this is the point of discussion, yes?
Yes.
So it strikes me that, having just heard what we've heard in the last couple of speakers, that there may be a reason that the committee recommended a task force of professionals who actually understand the consequences that have just been described to us. So if you are amenable to a friendly amendment, I would suggest that we change the motion to approve or recommend that the committee establish a task force of the people. I don't remember who, was it you, Patrick, who said who the people are? But they seem like people that know the things, Section 106, that we don't know, that maybe the committee doesn't know either.
I agree with you, but keeping it in the committee does not mean to exclude those groups. It would just mean that the committee is still chairing it, calling the meetings, taking the minutes, but is bringing in those advisors to the committee, which I think is easier than the proposed committee process, that's all.
I mean, I think it's something that we can certainly direct them to, you know, be, please, I mean, we can advise them in terms of what information that we want them to try to research and so forth. I mean, this is not, and they're going to come back to us, I presume, and say, this is a good idea, bad idea, or whatever.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's all I'm looking at.
Fair enough. I prefer not to micromanage the people who've done all the work, who've made a recommendation to us, but if that's what we want to do, I'll support it.
Again, I turn back to the recommendation that comes to us from the Beach and Boardwalk Committee that states, "The detailed advantages and disadvantages of each designation should be investigated by a task force constituted of one representative of city staff, a representative of the Rehoboth Beach Historical Society, a representative of the Village Improvement Association, a member of the Boardwalk and Beach Committee, and a representative of the Delaware Division of Historical and Cultural Affairs. A recommendation of a specific course of action should come from this group to the mayor and commissioners, and for them to make a decision regarding the next steps."
Well, again, my proposal, to keep it within the committee, allows all the committee members to participate with this, whereas that is only one committee member. Anyhow, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll do, we'll try a group vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
One nay. What does that mean?
Out of principle, I just don't support us micromanaging the recommendation that has been made to us, so I will vote no. But not because I believe the work shouldn't be done.
Ed, what was your... Let's do a roll call vote. Don, we know you've got a no. Commissioner Sharp?
Come back to me, please.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Shernowski?
I voted yes, but I also agree. I just wish we could leave it up to the discretion of the committee to decide what they want to do.
That's what they presented to us. The committee presented this recommendation. That's what they want to do. I'm sorry, if I'm misreading plain English here.
That was my understanding.
The question's been called. So Ed, what is your vote?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Gossett?
Nay.
Commissioner Bennett?
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Markert?
Yea.
And the chair votes yea. What's our count there?
Three to two.
I'm sorry.
Back to you. That's okay. Abstain.
So it passes three to two. Thank you very much. I'm sure that we'll meet and they'll decide when to, how to proceed within the committee. Thank you very mu... Thank you, Jimmy. We appreciate you coming to town today.
I'd be here anyway.
Anyhow. With that, our next item of business is community partner reports. If you recall, this used to be our liaison reports, and some time ago, we decided to ask them to submit in writing rather than give oral reports to save time. So we have reports embedded in the agenda from the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, Library, and Museum. I just would like to make note that within the Main Street report, it leads off with a report on the Post Office Task Force. You might recall that they've created a task force and to help, to help seek historic designation of the Post Office. So there's be somebody that we might want to talk with also on the Beach Boardwalk Committee. So, Post Office Task Force. And with that, I wanted to bring up Clear Space.
Excuse me, Mayor, if I may, with regards to community partner reports, I would just request that staff reach out to all of those individuals to reminder of the September 20th meeting, that they would present a written grant report update with regards to the goals towards the condition set forth in the funding, that that was required as part of the grant's application and letters, that a report be done for the September 20th meeting.
That is, that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we asked Clear Space to come forward. They have come and talked to some commissioners, they've talked, Clear Space has talked with the mayor and city manager and assistant city manager, seeking opportunities to where there might be big enough properties in Rehoboth. And we suggested that they come and make a presentation and face-to-face with us. And so you have the floor, Joe. Introduce yourself, if you would, and then a reminder that they have also another introductory letter embedded in the agenda.
Thank you very much, Mayor Mills. My name is Joe Fowler. I'm the managing director at Clear Space Theater Company. I've been here, part of the community, since December or so of last year. And I was asked to present a letter, and what I will do, if it works for all, is I will simply read the letter that was included, so we all have that same information together, and I will proceed. So we sent this to the city commission here in Rehoboth Beach, and, oh, it's right there on the screen, so you're going to basically get to read along with me. Apologies all.
We don't, it's too bad we don't have a little bouncing ball.
Yes. Can do like a karaoke version of reading the letter. Here we go. "Clear Space Theater Company has been committed for 20 years to serving the community in coastal Delaware by creating access to the best of professional theater and arts education. As our region grows, it has become evident that Clear Space must grow with the region to meet our community's needs. To that end, Clear Space is currently envisioning a new performing arts/cultural arts center for coastal Delaware, the first of its kind in Sussex County. While Clear Space would operate this new facility, the facility would be an accessible home for a range of arts institutions in our region looking for improved performance space. We hope the new facility can become a source of civic pride for our region and a destination for year-round residence, seasonal residence, and cultural tourism. In order to effectively assess market needs, both from our patrons and from prospective partners in utilizing the facility, Clear Space is beginning a market study in partnership with nationally recognized firm Theater Projects. A short list of previous performing arts centers developed in partnership with Theater Projects includes," I won't read all of them, you can see them on the screen, but University of Delaware Performing Arts Center, Performing Arts Center at University of Maryland, and places as far afield as the National Theaters of London, of Bahrain, and Cyprus. Many of their previous projects have involved public-private partnerships, which is a model that Clear Space may consider, depending on the nature of the property identified and the interest of municipal partners in such a partnership. The market study will be conducted at Clear Space's expense. Its purpose is twofold: one, to assess the scope of the new facility, to ensure that the building is adequately prepared to meet the needs of our community for decades to come; and two, to aid in site selection, given a clear understanding of those needs. While audiences attended Clear Space productions last year from 36 states and from 61 of 62 zip codes across the state of Delaware, the majority of our local audiences reside in Rehoboth Beach and in Lewis, Delaware. As Clear Space is committed to those core audiences in our region, all sites being considered at this time are either in 19971 or the 19958 zip codes. This includes parcels inside the municipal limits of the towns of Rehoboth Beach and Lewis, as well as parcels in unincorporated Sussex County. Interested members of the community are welcome to participate in the market study as Theater Projects plans for in-depth interviews with dozens of community members as part of their research, as well as further online studies. For those who are interested in participating, you are encouraged to reach out to me. My email's right there, joe@clearspacetheater.org for inclusion. Similarly, if there are members of the community that are aware of parcels of land for us to consider, you're very much welcome to share that as part of that market study also. The market study should be completed in approximately three months. Based on the results of that study, Clear Space's board and leadership intend to complete the site selection process by the end of this calendar year. Theater Projects and/or Clear Space leadership may be in touch with commissioners in Rehoboth Beach, Lewis, and Sussex County during this process for informational purposes. The results of the market study will be shared publicly at its conclusion."
Thank you, Joe. When you came and visited with the assistant city manager, city manager and myself, you all were asking about potential partnerships, you were asking about possible lands that were big enough to put a theater on, you talked about a property up near the Pennsylvania Railroad House, we said we thought that was too small. Ocean Bay Mart, we directed you there. We also indicated a reminder that the Cape and Open Senior Center might soon be moving out of town possibly. And then I think that they own that building, but we own the triangular property that the Cape and Open Senior Center and the Anna Hazard House sit on, and maybe that whet your appetite by mentioning that or something. Have you, have you looked at specific sites that you want us to respond to?
At this time, I will say that the purpose of the market study is for us to be able to identify sites and to be able to assess those sites and their feasibility for a facility of the scope that the market study will direct us towards. So at this time, I'm aware of a number of the sites that you've shared, and we are very open to conversation on all available parcels that might make sense. But until we complete the market study, we won't be able to say with final certainty, what's the square footage of the building that we need. So it's hard to say right now, we want to specifically address Site A, Site B, Site C, until we actually have gotten that market study work completed.
Okay. I guess I thought you had more specific ask or something, because...
I think our primary ask is that we want to be on the record that this market study is occurring, and that we want to invite everyone in the community, commissioners, residents as well, to participate in that market study, to help guide our planning and our thinking. We want our process as we pursue this to be incredibly transparent and inclusive of all that we serve here in the region.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm so glad, I haven't met with you, but nice to see you. And I'm on my way out, so you don't need to pay any attention to me whatsoever.
We don't anyway.
Exactly. Thank you, Edward, you're always a supporter. I'm so glad you mentioned your process that you're going to engage in, which is very well-defined here. And Mayor, I'm kind of wondering, if a city asset, any city asset were to be involved in this, what is our process for whether or not, I would assume it would need to be a competitive process? So I would think at some point, the commission will be talking about, what are the rules, the regulations, the rules of the road for a competitive process?
I mean, I just want to make sure that that... I'm not sure I've thought that far ahead, but yes, coming back in front of the commissioners would be it.
Well, but I'm not talking about coming back to the commissioners. I'm talking about if there's an entity such as Clear Space that may be interested in a city asset, well, I have no, well, any of the commissioners would not have any way to assess unless there's a competitive process, whether there are other entities that might be interested in the same property, is what I'm trying to say.
And Commissioner Sharp, that is a good point. So I have seen processes like that occur through a request-for-proposal process, where it's put out, and then you would receive perhaps one submittal or three, or however many. And then you could see what the different uses are that people are proposing, and which one, the whole body would, you know, feel best fits that property for the highest best use, in your opinion, along with the financial component as well.
Well, I'm glad you said that, because I think in the spirit of open and transparent government, it has to be a process that includes some type of RFP process. Thank you.
Along with that, following along though, but should not we, as a city, be prepared with a market analysis of the value of those properties, of the value of those assets, so that we also have competitive? Even though Clear Space is a nonprofit organization, I think that, you know, there's certainly value in having an arts facility within the community, but I think it, to be fair and transparent, we need to know the value of our assets, and if involving a public-private partnership were to occur, we also have to be prepared, and again, if it goes to a bidding process for that, I'm sure if other organizations feel that, you know, the senior center property, and just, that's, the lease expires in 2025, and as the lease is written, though, the building comes back to the city. The land is, we own, but the land, but the building also comes directly back to the city, as is the vacant lots on the ocean block in front of the Pennsylvania Railroad House. I'm sure that others might be interested in those also, if they are available for a public-private partnership. So again, the value of our assets, I think, is something that we must know, even if this doesn't come about, I think it's still a fiduciary responsibility of us to know the value of the assets, and we have several throughout the municipality that we need to understand what that, what those assets are.
I guess I was anticipating to hear more directly that you were definitely focused on the Cape and Open Senior Center and the triangular property owned by the, and that that would then initiate a cost analysis or market analysis.
Well, Mayor, it looks to me, from having read the letter and having you read it to us again, what they're looking at is a partnership, and it looks like... And it looks like there's a competing zip code that's really interested in a partnership. And I would hate for us to lose this partnership because we are so complicated and we're so concerned about process that we can't get out of our own way. Do you see what's in black and white on the screen? 19958. That is Lewis. That is not Rehoboth Beach. That is not something we should want. We've just had a discussion about opportunities for economic growth in this city. And now we're talking about a process to make this so complicated. Nobody is saying, suggesting that we shouldn't have due process here, that we shouldn't have open, transparent, whatever. But come on. Let's look at this for what it is. It's about having a cultural center in our town.
I don't disagree with you, Commissioner. But again, we have been accused many times of doing backroom deals, of this kind of nature. And how did this come about? So to keep the transparency out there, I think it's our fiduciary responsibility to know the value of that asset.
Of course, Commissioner, but my point is a different one. This is the first time we're talking about this since I've been a commissioner. And the first conversation we have isn't a welcoming one. It's how we're going to overlay this with complicated process. What I would have rather heard us talk about is, yes, we do want you to stay here.
Well, I was the first one to speak. So help me understand. What, what I was trying to convey is, I don't think we can have this both ways, which means we are constantly criticized because of things that are done behind closed doors or the perception thereof. And my only point is, I'm on record since 2019 at a commissioners meeting about my support for having Clear Space in the town of Rehoboth Beach. I was trying to be sensitive to all of the criticism that we're going to get if indeed, I'm going to call this were to be, let's say it all came to fruition in whatever timeframe you're going to be facing when you get your ideas together. And how do, how do you feel about the criticism of, well, that was a backroom sole-source deal?
Let's don't do that.
And how do you...
Let's simply don't do that.
Well, how do you, how do you, how do you see that playing out? Help me.
I believe we have a city manager who is capable of ensuring that we don't do that kind of thing. And we have a city solicitor who I hope will keep us on track. We shouldn't want to do backroom deals. We shouldn't ever do them.
So when, when City Manager Tedder talked about an RFP process...
Fine.
Okay, then I don't understand what your diatribe is about.
It's about the opening conversation with an organization who has presented to us that they're looking at two zip codes, one of which is not us. About where they're going to locate themselves.
I think you've just conveyed that you want them in town. I'm going to tell you, I want to convey that I want them in town. In fact, I'm salivating a little bit about the possibility of you going over to the Senior Center area and utilizing that triangle. And you, yes, you would need to come in front of us to be able to utilize that triangle. We'd have to work out a deal. And I see that, that we could have a private-public partnership, such as maybe we contribute X million dollars to building an underground parking garage, and you build one of the floors also. And that, that benefits everybody. So I'm excited about trying to keep them in town and...
Well, I am as well. And I don't think we need to speculate on what it might be in the future. And as long as there is a piece of the process that City Manager Tedder already referenced, I'm perfectly fine with that. I think this is great. It's how we go about things sometimes that get us into a lot of criticism and uneasiness.
For sure. Anybody else?
I just want to make the comment that, I mean, from my exposure and experience on this, with the last time that we had Clear Space make a proposal, you know, to build, to build a facility in the city, and it became a very divisive, divisive issue. And obviously, I don't think anybody here wants to replicate that or revisit something like that. So I mean, I commend you certainly for coming to us and explaining what you're doing and having a market study. I'm on board with all this. But obviously, it's all going to, you know, boil down to the details of what you propose and so forth. And I hope that process can be made. That, that process, I recall, you know, you came a little bit more fully formed to us before, at the time that we learned about it. And the fact that it ended up being a location that I think didn't really suit, frankly, didn't suit Clear Space, nor suited the city, and it kind of devolved from there. But I, you know, I am certainly very receptive to this. I appreciate you coming. You know, I look forward to more discussions about this. And maybe we can forge a public-private, yeah, public-private partnership or whatever you want to call it. And so let's, let's proceed. So that's, that's my...
If I may, I think coming now without a project that is fully formed and fully baked is part of our intention. Because we want this to be a dialogue, and we want to be sure that wherever Clear Space ultimately builds a new performing arts center versus Sussex County, it's done with full transparency and full engagement from everyone that's part of our community. So I thank, I want to thank every member of the Board of Commissioners who has chatted with me as elected officials, welcoming a new person to town, and has chatted with me in this forum right now for your thoughtful work and for your support. And I understand that that support needs to be measured by a wide variety of needs. And we recognize that's normal.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Have you, I'll speak for everybody. I think we want you to stay here. So what do we need to say to you that's another town may have already said?
I don't know that I can, in all honesty and fairness, I don't know that I can answer that question.
But could we come with you with something that would entice you to continue to look within our boundary versus looking outside?
I believe the market, the market study we're doing is to look at the full region. So at this point, we're not going to change the scope of the market study. However, the outcome of the market study may be determined by what we learn through this process. And if so, if there's information to be gained in these next few months that lead us to a specific outcome in the market study, we are grateful to learn that additional new information.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe, I want to thank you for your professionalism and your intention here. I think you, I welcome you to Rehoboth Beach and glad you're at Clear Space. And I think you, you're, you're doing the right thing by the community in this process. And I want to commend Commissioner Preston for the comments that he made. I understand the need to do the market study, and I hope that it leads you to Rehoboth Beach. And if, if there's two options that are equal, I hope that we can convince you that this is the right spot. And I, I'm reassured by some of the comments by my colleagues today that, that when that happens, you will be welcomed with an open mind and arms at the opportunity that may present itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
So Mr. Mayor, from what I've heard, the commissioners are amenable to continuing the conversation. And my intention would be to continue working with Joe, answering any questions that Clear Space may have throughout their market study, and then bringing this back to the commissioners when there's something to present back to you.
I, I think it's more than that, City Manager. I think it's, can, can you and your team look more deeply at satisfying what Commissioner Bennett just had a dialogue with Joe about? If we are in competition with Lewis, what is it about Rehoboth that we could tell them that might be beneficial at the, at the end of this market study? Outside the market study?
Of course.
Not something that you might know because you're, you're new. But where's Evan? Evan would, and the team would.
Yes, so our, our plan would be to, you know, look at what their needs are and try to best match those. So, and then also addressing Commissioner Gossett's point earlier, I've seen that, you know, doing two commercial appraisals on any property in general that the city wants to lease or dispose of, and averaging the two is typically a really good way to know what the full market value is. And then if it is a public-private partnership, we could look at what the, you know, cost benefit is of what we're partnering on.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you very much, Joe. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Do you want to take some comments?
I'm ready to hear comments if you want me to, but I don't know that I need to respond to comments. But it's up to your discretion.
And do, do a short, short response, yes.
Frank Cooper, 96 East Lake Drive. I came in adamant, adamant support of Clear Space remaining in the city of Rehoboth. And I, I do a little political work on the side, and I go around and talk to neighbors and whatnot. And I have heard serious criticism about people from my preservationist group's candidates who were against Clear Space and a party to the last debacle. It's all behind us now, but there is still an overwhelming support in this, in this city amongst the citizens to keep Clear Space here. And it would be a political and financial disaster for us to lose Clear Space. So I would seriously recommend that you do what Mr. Preston was saying about clearing the obstacles. Get the checkbook out. Do whatever you have to do, but win this one. We don't want another, lose the, you know, the beach, Duville Beach or anything like that. We want to win this. And I think it's within your power to do that. I mean, you have, we have the resources. We have the best city. I understand from the previous survey that Clear Space did, that the number-one feature that their clientele wanted was to be able to be a walking distance to restaurants, to and from, after and before, which is, it's, that's kind of a feature of going to Broadway. And that's what I and everybody I know does when they go to Broadway to shows. They go to a dinner before or after show. Rehoboth Beach has a real leg up on everybody on that. We have a walkable city with a lot of restaurants. And so let's leverage that. We'll never beat them on parking out there. They'll have more parking spaces. They will never beat us on walkability and charm. So let's leverage what we have and keep this, this asset in this city and bend over backwards. I mean, really, go to the wall on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Tom?
Tom Gainer, property owner. Don, don't give up. Because, and I hope that you make a motion at some point because the one committee that you guys do not organize is a development committee. You've got the basement attack on six inches, six, 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 eight, the dumbest, most minute issues that are non-crisis that you guys focus inordinate amounts of time on. And you shoot the squirrels. And we miss the bear. And there's not a single mindset that is demonstrated by this commission. And Tony, I think this is what people are really more frustrated about than some of the things that you think people are frustrated about. It's the lack of coherence and competence to develop the Rehoboth of tomorrow. And it's all this small-ball stuff that we grind to dust that people don't really care about. I don't think there's, I don't think there's any constituency that doesn't fit in somebody's living room on Oak Avenue that cares about the attics or the basements. But yet we focus like lasers on that. We have inordinate amounts of staff time on that. And we miss the opportunities to be the Rehoboth of tomorrow with development opportunity. Go stay in Lewis. Lewis, I commend you for coming back to Rehoboth. And I hope you do keep up the competition because that's the only way you're going to keep their feet to the fire. Lewis is on fire. And it's eating our lunch. Because we're the city of no. We can't get things built. We destroy things by process. And Patrick, I'm shocked that we don't know the value of those properties and why there's not already a two-year cycle of updating those values. And I hope that that is one of the things that should have just been taken offline and been done as a de facto imperative. But Don, organize a development committee. Make development a keynote of the Rehoboth of tomorrow and get the commission focused on moving forward instead of the nonsense that we focus on. The mayor just proposed a override of a committee that he sits on and ignored the recommendation of the committee. That's got to stop. You guys are in control, six to one. The Rehoboth of tomorrow is in your hands. Make it so.
Thank you, Don. Anybody else? Harvey?
Harvey Shulman, Henlopen Avenue. I'm somewhat surprised at some of the things that have been said. I think the best things have been said, actually, by Clear Space and by the city manager. They're doing their due diligence. They're trying to find out what works for them. When some of you came up as cheerleaders, the audience are here, let's keep them here no matter what. Let's make it happen. We have to do our due diligence. We have to see what works for the city, for the residents. I would love to keep Clear Space in the city. But I don't know. You know, there's talk about the economics, right? This is theoretical, okay? But suppose that piece of property was worth $30 million, okay? And someone's saying, well, I can get something in Lewis, and they're going to give us a free piece of property. And someone who lives in Lewis, who's a gazillionaire, is going to buy the building there. Well, you know, you have to see your demographic study, but that's a pretty damn good economic deal in Lewis. And maybe that economic deal doesn't work for Rehoboth. We need to see what the city's interests are, and they include keeping Clear Space. But it's not just that simple. Keep them at all costs. Because cities that kept baseball stadiums, football stadiums, you know, what they're finding out is it wasn't all as simple and as terrific and bringing in money as they thought. So I encourage you to, yes, be constructive. Let's keep the door open, find a way to keep them here. But the city needs to find out what its economic interests are, what its residents want, what's the value monetarily and otherwise to the city. This is a debate, Mayor, we had 10 or 15 years ago. There were people who had different visions of the city. There were people who viewed the city as a, you know, a piggy bank, a way to get a return on investment. They wanted parking garages. You know, they had all these great ideas, okay? Well, at that time, the voters spoke. The voters didn't select leaders who wanted to take us so far in that direction. So I urge you, we have a gem here. And maybe they, maybe they fit in as part of the gem, and that would be great. But let's not forget the city's own interests, economic and otherwise, and keep those in mind. And if we all do that, and we proceed, you know, with due diligence and in good faith, the right decision is going to happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Harvey.
Mayor, if I may just say, I mean, I appreciate a lot of the comments that were, that were made today. And I, I mean, we, look, we have a, a new director of planning and community development. And I think here, the consensus is we want Clear Space to stay in Rehoboth Beach. I don't even think we, it should be a want. Our CDP mandates that we have and maintain the arts and culture of this community. And the CDP only gets referenced when it's convenient for some people. But it's not, it shouldn't be a want, it should be a mandate. And I think the, the action from this commission to our staff should be, we want this to happen. Let's figure out how to make it happen. And obviously, we have to do our due diligence as Clear Space does. But I think that we can't just wait to respond to Clear Space. We need to start figuring out what we can do to entice them to stay here and what type of partnership we would be willing to have. So I think we need to start doing that work now.
Frances Kelleher, 318 Stokely Street. Thank you, Harvey, for everything you said because that makes it easier for me because everything you said is what... because that makes it easier for me because everything you said is what I wanted to say and wouldn't have been able to say it as eloquently. But I'm here to say, no, don't get the checkbook out. Please, don't. What Commissioner Sharp raised and what Commissioner Gossett said absolutely makes sense. It's about what is the best use of our city, our city resources, and what makes the most sense in the interest of the city financially. So it's not about, you know, we want something, fine, but it's got to make sense for the taxpayers. So I, I am grateful to Harvey for everything he said because, you know, I really disagree with what Tom said, you know? Things that the city is working on, like safety issues for children, not being burnt to death in fires and basements and attics, is important to me. I think it's important to a lot of people. I don't think it should be trivialized, Tom, in the way that you trivialized it. And that's, and I'm not saying that I don't agree with, it might be nice to have Clear Space stay in the city. It might be, but it needs to be looked at objectively.
Thank you, Frances. Last call. Rick?
Rick Perry, 46 Pennsylvania Avenue. To make full disclosure, I am on the board of directors of Clear Space, but I am speaking now as a resident in my personal capacity. I think that Mr. Shniewski's suggestion is the most sensible one. Yes, you have to take into account what is financially in the best interest of the city, but I think the city, pursuant to the CDP, has an obligation to do whatever it can do to ensure that we have a cultural center in this community, which is so important to any community. If Clear Space leaves and we can't attract another organization, a comparable organization, the city's left without any culture whatsoever. And I don't want to live in a community that doesn't provide a cultural outlet for its citizens. And I do think that it's time for the city, as a taxpayer, I think it's time for the city to start looking at ways that it can incentivize Clear Space to stay in, to stay in this community. And just as it should, look at ways to incentivize other businesses and organizations to make this their home as well so that we have a well-rounded community. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Lisa?
First of all, Lisa Schlosser, Dover Street. And Stan, I know I give you a hard time a lot, but this time I want to compliment you. I really appreciate you stepping forward and articulating kind of what the needs of the city are relative to Clear Space. And by the way, I'm also speaking as a resident, not as a, a member of Clear Space or affiliate with Clear Space. I also want to thank, I just want to thank Commissioner Preston, Commissioner Bennett. Tim, I'm sorry you're rolling off the commission. I've, I, you've really made some excellent comments and observations, so I am going to miss your insights. So I want to thank all of you that made comments about Clear Space, and I want to echo something Commissioner Shniewski said, is that we tend to use the CDP to stop things, but in all transparency, the CDP does say that we want to keep arts and entertainment in the city. So we're not going behind the scenes here. We're not being, showing a lack of transparency. You all said it better than I did, Tom, and others too. But, but thank all of the commissioners for stepping forward, making the comments you did, and, and making the commitment to review Clear Space. I think it's something we want to have in our, our town. We want to be a center for arts and performing arts and theater in this county, in this state, in the nation, for goodness sake. For those of you that don't know, we have two graduates of the Clear Space program who are on Broadway and are in, is it two or one? Two, that are in the, the play that won Best Tony for a musical this year. Two Clear Space alumni. This is what we're doing. Did everybody know that? Like, that's a freaking big deal. I mean, this is what this theater's doing for our town, for our nation, and for arts. So thank you to all of you that, that spoke up and are supporting moving forward to conduct this analysis. So thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you. Ready to close down this topic? I think so. Thank you, Joe. Next item of business is a public hearing on the matter of amending Chapter 270 of the municipal code by amending Sections 270-4 and 27021B relating to the definitions of basement, non-habitable basement, habitable basement, crawl space, floor finish, wall finish, gross floor area, and amending the gross floor exemption for qualifying basements and regulating certain existing non-habitable basements. Who, Corey? And this is, this is a public hearing, so how do we want to proceed? Corey, you're going to go first, and then we will open it up to the members of the public?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor, and the public. My name's Corey Shinko. I've been up here a few times on this subject. This started about two years ago when I first noticed there was a conflict between our building code and our zoning code. And that's how this whole thing started. It is only two inches, and this six-six basement originated in a 2006 ordinance with the intent of giving homeowners storage space in their basements that wouldn't affect the size of their, their, their house overall. They could claim this, this storage space to be completely excluded from the house's floor area. And that was the intent, that the lower ceilings would make it more difficult to be used as occupiable space. In October of 2023, during a workshop, I laid out a, a few statistics between 2018 and 2023, which was a five-year span. Rehoboth averaged about 25 new houses a year. Of those, 66% each year included these six-six basements. And over the last 25 most recent houses at that time, a little over 20% of them had sought rental licenses. So what I'd like to do is to go over just briefly what this ordinance entails. I don't intend to speak line for line, but we can do that. And, and first, I'd like to speak to what this ordinance does moving forward for all new construction or new houses in Rehoboth. It deletes any mention of six-six, what we have currently in our code. And what you were, you would be allowed to do moving forward if you wanted to build a basement, is to have a higher ceiling height, which is in line with our adopted code, our building code, between six-eight and less than seven feet. This ordinance restricts the level of finish or interior walls to state basically that these non-habitable basements do not have any interior walls or partitions. They have no floor and wall finishes. However, we do allow for insulation on the walls with a minimum value of R10. And also, there's an exception in this ordinance that allows for walls, electrical upgrades, and finishes that are tied to certain appliances if they're required. And so that's what you're allowed to do moving forward with this ordinance. You get a little bit more head height, but it's an open unfinished basement, and it can still be used for storage space. We would require each basement to have an emergency escape and rescue opening in the form of a window well, a build code doors that you open up or a walkout, and a, a smoke and/or carbon monoxide combination detector. For all the houses that have already been built that have six-six basements in them, or that are in the process of being built right now under a valid building permit, those would be allowed to continue to remain. You can keep all of the finish that you have currently. What this ordinance does is restrict any additional levels of finish or more walls to be put in these six-six basements. This ordinance also then classifies any, classifies any houses that have basements that are six-six inches as legal non-conforming. So there's a provision in our code that allows you to do necessary repairs and maintenance to these spaces. You can do alterations to your house. You just can't remove more than half of the house and keep the basement. That's one of our provisions in our non-conformity section. So if you do have a house that has a six-six basement, you can, you can make alterations to it. You can make repairs to it. You can even put an addition onto it if zoning allows. What you can't do is add even more levels of finish or even more walls to the basement, and you can't remove more than half of your house and keep that six-six basement. So you essentially wouldn't be able to demolish the house down to the foundation, keep the six-six basement, and then rebuild. The, you would have to rebuild a, a whole new house. That's the, the, the core of this ordinance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about any specifics.
Are there any questions up here before we go to the public hearing?
I had one question. Just to clarify, there was a number of people that asked me, addressing the, the far give-back, not give-back, whatever, how that's affected by this, if you can, like, what's in, what's out?
The, the, the status quo since 2006 with the six-six basement would be, was that you can, you can build a house, and if it has a basement that's less than six feet, six inches, none of that basement space counts towards the, the square footage of the floor area of the house. If you build a, a house moving forward with, under this ordinance, and you build a non-habitable basement per the, per this ordinance, that, that entire space is, continued to be excluded from the floor area.
Anything else? All right, this is a public hearing, and if anybody would like to speak in favor or against, we'll open it up, and at some point, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the table up here for the Commissioners to decide whether they want to vote tonight or defer. And if, if they do want to vote, then obviously we would take a vote. Frank Cooper, you?
Yes, I'm, I'm speaking, Frank Cooper, 96 East Lake Drive. I'm adamantly against the current proposal. I, I think that this was started, it was triggered by people who were building bedrooms in these spaces and renting them. And I don't see as of yet you have directly tried to mediate that problem. You're taking a sledgehammer to drive a thumbtack in here. This is really more of, about going forward. You're, you are exempting the currently developed properties. In other words, the people who are offending and started all this can keep them. But if I want to build a new house, I have, I can't subdivide my basement. You know, I can't make a, a owner's closet or anything because it can't be subdivided. And that's just really unfair because I haven't rented my basement. It's just full of junk. And so I, I see this as really misdirected. I mean, I honestly understand what you're trying to accomplish, but you haven't tried the, the regulatory, the having building and licensing inspect, use their ability to inspect rental properties and go after the people who are actually abusing this before you, you start kind of impinging on other people's freedoms to do with what they want with their basement, as long as it's not illegal is in the current level. So I think you need to enforce the current rules first and see if that works before you do a zoning change, which I think would be very unpopular. I think if, there's one thing I've noticed in this town, nobody pays any attention to this stuff until the rules have been passed, and then they throw holly later. And I think that's exactly what's going to happen with this. When people realize what you've done, they're not going to be happy with it. And so I would suggest that you try an administrative approach to dealing with the basement development in the basement and the rentals, renting that space as a separate issue that can be handled administratively first. If that fails, then, then get out the sledgehammer. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Anybody else? Tom?
Bad penny, I keep coming back. Just, or maybe an idiot. Tom Gainer, property owner. Just to clarify, my friend Frances, I'm not trying to trivialize, you know, safety issues. I'm trivializing the micromanagement of people's residences and, and the silliness of, of the time spent on this micromanagement. I, I totally agree with Frank's comments. This is a, it's a fake issue. It's a fake crisis, and you got an incredibly intrusive solution to, again, I argued this before repeatedly. You guys don't present data that justifies these types of changes. There's no documentation. There's no justification. There's no, there are no numbers on, you know, how often this has happened. It's hypotheticals. It's anecdotal. It's somebody's pet peeve. And then you use the power of the state to come in with a sledgehammer, to use the, you know, his analogy, the sledgehammer for the thumbtack. It's an improper use of the state power. And you've got other opportunities to be able to control this. And the one thing that is so lacking in Rehoboth, and I've talked to so many people about this during the campaign season, there seems to be no mediation opportunity, whether or not, we just don't have mediation skills in City Hall in this, this monstrosity of a building. We don't seem to be able to take a small issue and get a rational solution without imposing the power of the state in such a draconian fashion. And that should stop. It's a tiny town. This is not something that is insurmountable with all of the staff that we have in order to try to negotiate a way through. And you had Brian Barry in here four months ago, who volunteered his expertise to be consulted. Can somebody raise their hand who called Brian Barry in the ensuing four months? And was he supportive of this? Because I didn't see any letter that was supportive of it. Or was he informative on perhaps a better path forward that we chose not to do? Probably the latter. But thanks very much. I strongly urge you, sanity, reject this kind of stuff. It's a mindset, and it's a mindset that should be killed. It's an infection that just keeps growing.
Thank you. Thanks, Don. Anybody else? This is a public hearing. Yes, sir. Identify yourself and your relationship to the city.
I will. Jude Kovas. I'm a homeowner at 132 Felton Street. I also own the home next door on 159 Columbia, which has been a long-term rental of mine to a family that has rented it since I purchased it in 2013. It was always purchased with the desire and expectation that I would turn it into a residence for my family. I've been remarried in the meantime. I've got four adult daughters. We now have grandchildren. It's, my tenant's about to move out, and it's like, it's the perfect time for us to be able to build. And unfortunately, it doesn't seem like it's the best time relative to this potential ordinance in that I just want to be able to have a finished basement that would be a rec room for my grandchildren, that they could just run around and have a rumpus room, not trying to do bedrooms and bathrooms and enlarge the, the space. I don't think that's too much to ask, and it sounds like in this ordinance, I'd be prohibited from being able to do that. So I would just ask that you thoughtfully give consideration to fact patterns such as mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor, can I make a point of clarification?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on a, I'm, yes, go ahead.
I just, I didn't say it in the beginning. This in no way restricts people from building basements. You can certainly still build basements in Rehoboth fully finished to have whatever you'd like down there. Rehoboth offers a 1,000-square-foot credit that goes towards the floor-to-air ratio, which we've had for quite some time. This is restrictive of those basements that are, that Rehoboth gives out for free, non-habitable basements. And we've placed on every single certificate of occupancy that I could find, at least over the last seven years, out of a special stipulation on the certificate of occupancy that the basement shall not be used as habitable space. So this is a, this first started off not as a unlawful conversion approach. This was that our own building code states you can't build a basement less than six-eight. We were letting people build basements at six-six. It is only two inches. It's a small issue, but it triggers our zoning code because our zoning code is written in such a way that everything's tied to six-six. So we couldn't simply just start to enforce our own building code because if we did that, you wouldn't be able to build the six-six basements. That would become null and void. So we're still working under the resolution put out in March of 2023.
So we're still working under the resolution put out in March of 2023, where commissioners assumed responsibility to allow basements to be built that are not in line with our building code. So this is, one of the reasons why this took so long is to the zoning that's tied to it. But again, any property owner in Rehoboth Beach can still build a basement. And we give 1,000-square-foot credit for that. This is simply limiting the free, nonhabitable basements that are, have been, come to be known as the 6'6" basement.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Hi, Seeley Garrity on Henlopen. Hi, Seeley Garrity on Henlopen Avenue. I'm just curious, how do you think you're going to enforce this? I mean, if I own a house and you say it's a six, six what?
Less than seven feet.
Okay, so you say, okay, I can't do anything with my basement except insulate it. How are you going to enforce that, seriously? Because are you going to go door to door, you know, like six months, every year? I mean, it seems ridiculous to have an ordinance that's really never going to be enforceable unless, you know, the neighbors get together as a group and start complaining weekly to the town. You know, I don't know how the heck you'll ever be able to enforce this.
That was one of the things, thank you, Seeley, that was discussed. And when the question was posed, do we want nonhabitable basements or not? The only way to effectively cut the risk down to zero was to completely kill it and not have nonhabitable basements here at all. So this was the next less restrictive thing. These basements are big. They average in Rehoboth 1,200 to 1,500 square feet. Some are bigger than that in Rehoboth. They build to the size of the first floor. The foundation walls go down and they mimic the exterior walls of the house. People build around 32-foot wide houses by a decent length, depending on if they want a pool or not. And these tend to average 1,500 square feet. If they have a pool, around 1,250. If this were to pass, you have a fully-built house with a very expensive front door. And to try to fit the lumber and then the over 100 panels of drywall, it would be a very sizable undertaking. So it wouldn't cut out the risk to 0%, but it would be substantially more difficult to go back through after you have a beautifully finished house and bring in the lumber, bring in the drywall, the electrical, the plumbing, and all the finished materials that you would need to through your, through the nice, expensive front door or through a small side door to try to get it down the stairs. It would be a very difficult process. So it would, in this case, where this is the next best thing then to effectively completely remove the nonhabitable basements.
If people want to build out their basement, they're going in the back door. They're putting the stuff through the windows for lumber. That is the most ridiculous idea in the world that because they have a nice front door, they're not going to bring the stuff into the house. I mean, that's crazy. Again, how are you going to know they're doing it?
Well, this was, this was the next best thing then to effectively kill the nonhabitable basements was to limit the amount of finish down there and to limit the number of rooms.
But again, I asked about enforcement. And if someone's motivated to finish out this nonhabitable space, how are you going to know it happened unless the neighbors get together as a ball and start complaining? And people that have been in neighborhoods for years, you know, are you going to go once a year and check their basement? Because it may be empty today, but next week I could have it finished.
Thank you, thank you. That, admittedly, we divided this into two sections. And the enforcement program is yet to be determined. But we decided to move forward with this portion of it so that we had something going. And is that...
What I had commented on at the workshop this month, as well as the workshop at the previous month, is that Code Enforcement has been actively working on how many houses that we've been able to find. Again, I urge people to go back to the October 2023 workshop where I presented that. That was, I believe, in the Cape Gazette and on some of the local news networks. There were seven houses that we found in an open-source search that were actively listing bedrooms. Some of the advertisements said that it was great for the kiddos because of the small, because of the small ceiling heights. They're in these rooms that have no way to get out. And so that was one of the aspects that we have. It's in the minutes that you can look at in October. We found even more houses since then that will be shown at one of the future meetings in either September or October that Code Enforcement is actively working on. That's going to touch on the residential rental section. That's Section 210 of our code, so that's a nonzoning section. And they'll have some more up-to-date statistics on the proportion of new home builds, as well as residential rentals overall, how many business licenses we have. Currently, we go out and look at or inspect the residential house. For the very first time, they have, they apply for a rental license. After that, we don't go back. It's a self-inspection checklist. And when we adopted the pool code in 2015, there was a stipulation put in there for a triannual inspection by the city. So these are some things that we are looking forward to on the, on this end that's not to do with inspection. Again, I have to keep hammering this home. We are allowing houses to be built that's not to our own adopted code. It's only two inches, but it brings in the zoning code section. So that was what created this need to move it from 6'6" to 6'8" to begin with. Reducing the level of finish, while it's not a perfect solution, apart from killing the nonhabitable basement, it was the next best thing that would do the most to deter and/or reduce the risk of creating rooms in these spaces after the fact.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a point of question? I'm trying to, you mentioned about 1,000...
You need to stand.
1,000 square feet. Can you help me understand that?
Sure. That was, and I believe this was in the May workshop. I gave a whole presentation of what's left in our code. So in our current city code, you can have a habitable basement. And it's, you get 1,000-square-foot credit for that. We've had it for many years now. What it does is it reduces the percentage or the bulk of the above-ground portion of the house, however you net an overall portion. So on a typical 5,000-square-foot lot on a house without, that doesn't have a pool, you can build 3,000 square feet in our current code above ground. And you could have a 6'6" basement that's 1,500 square feet or more in its free space. If you were to have one, an actual basement, eight foot tall with bedrooms and all that, you could take advantage of that 1,000-square-foot credit. But it would drop you to the 25, from the 3,000 to 2,500. So your total house would be 3,500, but only 2,500 above ground.
Thank you. With that, the public hearing is closed. And young lady here, I'll reopen it for you if you like, but then we're going to close it, since you haven't spoken yet. Your name and...
My name is Sonia Kovas. We're together.
Are you related?
Yeah, we're related. So I guess I'm trying to figure out, are we trying to do all this because we are worried about the renters and the people coming in here that are nonresidents that are, and the people that are, you know, maybe causing problems in the community and being loud and streperous? Like, why are we limiting this? Again, I want my damn basement. You know, it's like your grandkids downstairs in whatever basement you want are not going to annoy your neighbors. And so I'm just curious as to why we care how much basement space we have, as long as we're not annoying our neighbors, right? What is the purpose of this whole exercise?
Sure, if I may. The first, the biggest one was to get our zoning code in line with the building code. And again, that's just two inches, but that pulls in the zoning code. And the second one is to really differentiate between a habitable basement and a nonhabitable basement. And to differentiate between the two. Because right now, there's no difference between a nonhabitable basement and a habitable basement as far as if you, you know, you walk down to a basement now. So there are certain people that, or there's certain houses that have incorporated habitable basements. They've taken the city up on the 1,000-square-foot credit. They put down what they'd like to in those spaces. And then we have other ones that are getting those spaces to be less than 6'6", and there's seven rooms down there. And there's only one way to get out, and that's off in a corner. And so this is to try to still allow houses to be built to have the habitable basements. But then moving forward, if a house incorporates a nonhabitable basement that's not intended to be used for anything other than storage and mechanical utility space, then that's what, it still can be used for that. But it restricts the, you know, interior walls and crown molding and drywall and such.
So homeowners then are restricted, basically, on how much they can build and enjoy their homes, is what I'm saying about that. Your why, your answer to my question, the why, was so that we can get our wording correct, so that we can have everything the same, so that then we can enforce it. That makes sense, right? That does make sense to me. But then if we back it up a little bit and, you know, we're going to, how do we enforce things and all of that? Well, we got to start with the things that are new builds, at least. Or maybe when they come in and they do their, you know, they, people apply to have their rentals, assuming people do that, like they should. They then are inspected, and they have to do that on a yearly basis. And then those things can be inspected. And maybe those people with habitable basements are ineligible to rent their places, or I don't know. I don't know how all that works, but there's places and ways to do it. I just, I'm going to just say I don't agree with the fact that we've held a property in hopes of being able to utilize the full space and we're peaceful citizens, as are most of the homeowners here. I just would like to see that, you know, your verbiage can be the same and you can make it all work so that that piece is more, I don't know. How do we say that? It's all, you can somehow find a way to penalize or whatever you want. But it doesn't have anything to do with why people have homes here.
Thank you, thank you. We're, everybody's, everybody's had the chance to speak. But everybody, we also have time constraints, Frank. You don't have unlimited time. I'll give you one minute if you wanted to get up.
First off, what are we solving for here? If the problem was rental basements, and you yourself have said that you have identified the homes that are not in compliance, right? You have identified properties that...
We've done some open web searches, open-source searches, and have, at least from October, we found seven. And Code Enforcement has been actively finding more.
Okay, so that's solving that problem, is it not? You're active, you know who the offenders are, and you have the authority to remove, take their rental license or affect that?
We're looking at the legal aspects of that right now.
But you haven't actually tried to use that as an effective tool to stop this behavior. You've gone to a zoning change first. I mean, it's kind of tagged on to the IRC raising...
Time limit, thank you. Everybody's had their time, everybody's had their three minutes. Is there anybody new? Yes, ma'am, you've had your time. No, you've had your time twice. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the public hearing is now closed.
...this whole issue by requiring all basements to have a secondary means of egress, whether it's a window egress or when they're building the foundation, they have a door put in. You know, that way you're not restricting our property rights to how we use our basements. And for, I'm just being devil's advocate because I don't even have a basement. But if I bought a house with one, I want to use the damn thing.
All right, the public hearing is now closed, and we are, has been closed. And we are now bringing it back up here to the commissioners. The commissioners can discuss it further or comment. They can make a motion, they can defer till next time.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we defer this to a future meeting, at which time the enforcement piece of this can be coupled with the changes so that we can understand how, in fact, we're going to solve the issues that have been proposed to us.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Don Preston and a second by Commissioner Tony Sharp to defer this to a future undetermined date at a time when the enforcement program can be added to the discussion. Is that okay?
Fair enough.
Okay. Is there any further discussion up here among the commissioners?
I'll have to say, I'm not in favor of deferring this. I think we should change the height so it meets the International Building Code. We should require egress and any, you know, life and safety measures and put this thing to bed. We're trying to probably solve it, we're trying to solve a problem that in my mind still doesn't exist. It's an enforcement issue.
Are you saying adopt parts of it or the whole thing in entirety?
No, just adopt parts of it that address us not meeting the International Building Code. And anything that, you know, has to do with life and safety and requiring an egress. I don't want to kick, like, keep kicking the can down the road.
And I believe that's what we have before us that addresses those things. You know, I think it, there's a, what I'm hearing individuals say, and maybe I'm wrong in this aspect, but you, we're not limiting basements. You have a basement, you can build a basement. And you have a choice. You can have a life-safety basement. Both of them will be habitable or nonhabitable. That's what we're creating. The issue is what was originally designed for nonhabitable basements with 1,000-square-foot bonus, if you will, is to reduce the bulk of the house. And that was the concern, and I think still is the concern, of the bulk and density of the city and what the city is appearing to look like with the streetscape. I think this is a, this has been worked on by Cory and by other members of Building and Licensing for a number of years. And I believe this is a remedy that is needed. It brings the zoning code and the building code into alignment. We have hired two very qualified Code Enforcement officers that are doing their job. If you would read the zoning report, zoning code enforcement report, those inspections have been going on and have been increasing and finding issues that come before us. It's a matter of life and safety, in my mind. And this issue of what we have before us, of this code change or amendment change to the current code, solves the problem. If there is additional enforcement that's going to take place, that's going to happen. This is looking forward. This is looking at the future of Rehoboth, of what we want to build and what we want to be. So I do not support that motion. I think we should go back to the original motion that we have in our agenda item report and move forward with this. We're always accused of kicking it down the road, kicking it down the road. And I, I'm just frankly tired of that, to take some action. If you don't want to take action, vote no against it. Simple as that. But we have got to make a decision. We are not sitting up here just twiddling our thumbs, trying to do something. This is an opportunity. You have the, you have the ability to build a basement, whether you choose it to be habitable or nonhabitable. We're not restricting that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We restrict the size of a house. You can't build a mansion. That is the zoning code.
No, public comments closed, folks, thank you. Did you have a...
My frustration with this is we're going to exacerbate the problem by giving additional two inches. The whole issue here is about enforcement of inhabitable basements. We didn't listen to Cory 18 months ago when they recommended we eliminate them. So just make the basement seven feet. People have a choice if they want a basement or not. And you don't have to worry about enforcement. So we're just allowing people another two inches to do exactly what you say the problem is. is.
Plus, we have no enforcement.
Right. So if we just say the basement is seven feet, and you've made a decision, you want a basement, it's seven feet. I don't care what you do in it. You want a wine cellar, you want a laundry, you want bedrooms, it's a seven-foot basement. Done. But now we're going to go and we're going to try to enforce three inches. We've been talking about this for way too long, and it's absolutely ridiculous.
Well, if we want to make those changes, then we're gonna have to...
But Stan, we've, we have been going around and around on this, and every time we talk about it, well, what about a laundry room? What about a wine cellar? What about a little partition? What about my pool equipment? I mean, we dicked around with this for so long, I just can't believe it.
What you're saying, if I may, we're basically taking, getting rid of the FAR reduction, right? It's like, you build a house here, it's seven-foot basement, there's no FAR reduction, right? Are we not changing, are we not changing, does that not affect the zoning? I mean, don't we have a zoning ordinance that includes that? That's, you tell me. That's my understanding of it.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. If you recall, the motion is to defer this vote to a future time to be determined, at which we would further add the discussion of enforcement into the mix with that, do a roll call vote. You can keep your, Commissioner Sharp?
Aye.
Commissioner Stranowski?
No.
Commissioner Gossett?
No.
Commissioner Bennett?
No.
Commissioner Markert?
No.
And the, Don?
Obviously, I vote aye.
Okay. And the chair votes no also. The motion fails. That allows us to make, entertain another motion, if somebody wants to.
Okay, Edward.
I'm not in favor of moving this along.
I think it's, well, we don't have a motion, so we don't have discussion, I suppose, but I do want to have some discussion.
I would make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 270, Sections 270-4 and 270-21B1 of the Municipal Code regarding basements-related definitions, the gross-floor area exemption for basements, and the classification of existing non-habitable basements with a ceiling height of less than 6 feet 8 inches.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Patrick Gossett, a second by Commissioner Markert to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 270, Sections 270-4 and 270-21B1 of the Municipal Code regarding to basement-related definitions and gross-floor area exemption for basements and the classification of existing non-habitable basements with a ceiling height of less than 6 feet 8 inches. Want a reminder that this is in the zoning code, and that's why we're having a public hearing. Also a reminder, because it's in the zoning code, we have to give reasons for our vote, and we will take a roll call vote. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I, Mayor, I heard for the first time today that the purpose of this is to restrict the size of homes. The first time that we've discussed that.
What? I don't understand.
You don't have to.
Thank you.
It was said that the purpose is to restrict the density...
Spitted by whom?
By you.
By me?
Yes. Yes. To restrict the density of homes. And I, if that is the, if that is the reasoning for this...
That was the original purpose of it.
The ship has sailed. This commission, not made up of these folks, but some of these folks, made decisions years ago to allow for building homes that are oversized on small lots. And now we're dealing with the consequences of that, and in not very thoughtful way. So it's amusing to me, in some respects, that this is how we go about it. And for the first time on the day that we're taking a vote, we say what we're actually aiming at. And it was shrouded in the idea of public safety, without data to support the fact that there have been problems. I've asked for data since the beginning of this discussion. We've gotten none. And I respect very much the diligence with which Cory has addressed this topic, but I don't respect the lack of leadership in instructing the staff that this is not the way to go. So I don't know how we've gotten here, but we've gotten here. It's unfortunate that we're at this place. I don't think this is the way we should be legislating.
Again, we have a motion and a second in front of us. We're headed to a roll call vote. Is there anybody else that, further discussion? I'm gonna do a roll call vote and rotate the vote. Commissioner Stranowski?
No.
Commissioner Gossett?
I think it's for the purpose of promoting health, safety, and morals of this community as outlined in Title 22, Chapter 3 of the Delaware Code. This ordinance does give you a choice of a basement, habitable or non-habitable, and it also brings into line our zoning code and our building code into alignment.
Mayor, just a point of order?
Yes, ma'am.
I think Commissioner Stranowski needs to give a rationale, because it's a zoning vote.
Not to vote no.
Not to vote, thank you.
Commissioner Bennett?
No.
Commissioner Markert?
Yes, and my reason pretty much coincides with what Commissioner Gossett said, but the idea, the thing that concerns me the most is the prospect of the lack of enforcement. I mean, I feel very strongly about the enforcement piece, and I think it's very unfortunate that we have not included that in here. However, we are, as Commissioner Preston says, we are here. So I would, whatever the outcome of this vote is, I would still pursue that. I think we still need to have some kind of program or policy with regard to enforcement, because that is my principal concern. That's my greatest concern, which is what's going to happen when somebody has a fire or some kind of terrible thing, and it's, and people will not be able to get out of the basement, and we're going to be very, very, very troubled by that. And I would prefer that day does not come, and that's why, you know, that we have made, gone to all this trouble to make, to basically have the choice of having a habitable basement, and if it's not, if you have not have a habitable basement based on the dimensions of it, that you shouldn't have people habitating that. And if you are, you're assuming that risk, and that's a risk that I don't think people should take. So as Mr. Shinko has also said, you know, this is the next best thing. I don't know how much best it is, but it's, we're allowing for non-habitable basements to be constructed in a certain way. I think that's a bone to be thrown for some people. Otherwise, as Mr., excuse me, as Commissioner Bennett has said, build the seven-foot basement, and you have your basement. So I'm voting for the spirit of this, of this ordinance.
Commissioner Don Preston?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
I'm voting no, because of the, if the enforcement piece is going to be here in September or October, to me, that is a better and more complete picture.
And the chair votes yes for the reasons articulated by other colleagues, and the result is a four no and a three, so the motion is denied. Correct? All right. Thank you. With that, that ends that topic for now. Next item of business is discuss and consider a recommendation to award the annual street paving and water main replacement contract to Mumford &amp; Miller in the amount of $637,665.05. Want to know why they can't round it down five cents?
Thanks, Mayor. I will be brief. The purpose, again, of this item is to consider approving the annual citywide street paving and water main replacement program. An agenda item is provided, an agenda item report is provided in the agenda. Again, the repaving will occur on First Street from Baltimore to Virginia. It'll also occur on Maryland Avenue after a water main is replaced on the Ocean Block of Maryland Avenue. The engineer's estimate was $817,857.09. Mumford &amp; Miller was the lowest responsible bidder at $637,665.05. So the recommendation is to approve a ward of the FY '25 street paving water main replacement program to Mumford &amp; Miller. That's all I have to report.
And this is a budgeted amount? I mean, it's in the budget. There any discussion up here?
Evan, just for the record, this is not just a staff recommendation, correct? It was also Wallace Montgomery took a look at this?
That's correct. Yep. At the last meeting, there was a presentation given, and there's a letter included within the presentation from Wallace Montgomery, showing the bid totals from each of the responsible bidders, and making the recommendation based on their analysis to award to Mumford &amp; Miller because they were found to be the lowest qualified bidder.
Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to award the contract for the annual street paving and water main replacement contract to Mumford &amp; Miller in the amount of $637,665.05.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Patrick Gossett, a second by Commissioner Tony Sharp to award the paving and water main replacement contract to Mumford &amp; Miller in the amount Is there any further discussion? There any public comments?
Right there, 102 Laurel Street. Just a quick question. There, if I recall correctly, the other two bids were pretty close to the original engineering estimate. This one is significantly less. Just wanted to understand why this one is so much less.
Sure. I would, I'm filling in for the Director of Public Works, so I'd have to consult with him. I think he did address that at the last meeting, if I'm not mistaken. But again, the, Wallace Montgomery was the consulting engineer on this project, so they actually met with Mumford &amp; Miller after receiving their bid, just to confirm the accuracy of their bid, the quantities, the amounts that they bid on, and everything was, again, found to be true and accurate. So I don't have an answer, I'm, sorry, I don't have an answer for you, but certainly we'd be happy to have Henry provide an update on that to the city manager. We can report back at a future meeting.
Yeah. Now, I appreciate you being upfront with me that you don't have an answer, but great. Thank you. For the explanation. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, we'll call a question. All those in favor of awarding the contract to Mumford &amp; Miller in the amount noted, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? And the motion's carried unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Evan.
Sure.
With that, our next item of business is... Discuss and consider an ordinance to amend Chapter 92? No, it's not.
Fund balance.
Next item of business is old business B. I apologize. Discuss and consider adopting the city's fund balance and net position policy.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. At the last meeting, we had discussed the current status of the fund balance and net position policy. So this was the workshop meeting in August. At that meeting, I was asked to come back with a draft of the policy that includes three things. The first was the process for which, what happens if there is a need to replenish the unassigned fund balance? That's if the minimum that's established within the policy falls below that required minimum as set forth in this policy. So that was the first thing. The second thing was a process for what happens if there is an excess in the required minimum as set by the policy. And the third was a reporting requirement, and I think the recommendation at the last meeting was to use the same reporting requirement that's set forth in our investment policy, which is a quarterly reporting provision. So I'll just touch on these for both. The strategy to replenish the fund balance or net position when it falls below the minimum as required by the policy, but also for use of an excess of the minimum. In both cases, the city manager and the finance director would develop a strategy and make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. It's important to note that the Board of Commissioners has the final say-so, the final authority on how to either restore the amounts to the minimum level, or, as mentioned, blow to use the funds for certain expenditures. So we've identified a couple strategies, just doing a little bit of research, that may be appropriate for consideration and recommendation. I just want to mention, too, that it includes, but certainly does not limit, some of these things. So in the position where, or situation where we need to restore the amounts to the minimum level, one recommendation may be to increase departmental revenues, but also look at state and federal grants, certainly reducing expenditures by achieving economies of scale or efficiencies, as well as rate sizing the workforce, selling surplus property or assets not required for the provision of the essential services, or increasing taxes and fees, taxes and fees. Forward use of the excess funds, some of the strategies and recommendations may be paying down existing debt to reduce, again, the interest expenses, funding large-scale capital outlays. One of the comments that was made at the last meeting was about the excess that's currently existing in the Water Department under this policy. So we've had the Director of Public Works come to recent meetings, talking about the PFAS regulations that are coming in to effect within the coming years. We recently actually toured the Newark Water Treatment Facility, and they're doing some really impressive things for PFAS treatment. And the improvements that they've made range from $3.5 million to more for not just the capital improvements, but also the engineering component. So we will potentially have some significant capital outlays for water treatment, just as an example. And again, that's feedback just based on the comments at the last meeting. So large-scale capital projects, investing in projects that attack, attract, and retain businesses, create jobs or housing, or stimulate economic growth, offering tax cuts or rebates to residents and businesses, or improving municipal technology. Cybersecurity is a growing focus that our IT department has recently, again, just to enhance, you know, safety and protect data. So again, these are just some initial strategies. Again, at the last meeting, I was asked to come back, prepare sort of a template of what the strategy looks like, again, to replenish the minimum level, or to use some of the excess at the minimum level, and then also included the reporting requirement. And I think that's all I have to offer, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody?
If I could just make one comment, too. This policy does not in any way give approval or authority for transfer, or the city manager to transfer monies between the enterprise fund and the general fund. So I just wanted to state that on the record as well.
Thank you. That was, put in erroneously into a newsletter to the editor a couple times, so appreciate you clarifying that. Is there any further discussion up here? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll just make two brief comments. I think one thing I don't like is within the policy, and it's vague enough that it can be interpreted to maybe not be required, but under the replenishment section, it basically requires that the city manager come up with a plan to get the minimum fund balance back to where it should be. I don't, I don't know that it's necessarily that important... it's necessarily that important to do. We just shouldn't be spending cash on other things if we don't, if we're not meeting the fund balance. But I think that's, the wording is vague enough where there's some flexibility there. And my second point is, I want to be sure that in the calculation of the minimum fund balance, that we're not, that if we're looking at using some cash above and beyond what the minimum is, and it's being used on a capital project expenditure that is in that current fiscal year, that that number is also not included in the calculation. For example, I think we've got $10 million worth of additional capital outlays in FY26 year. So that $10 million is going to make the minimum go up by $10 million in the next fiscal year. But if we, but if going into the budget season, we had in excess of $3 million, and we wanted to spend that $3 million on one of the capital improvement projects that we have in FY16, we're not hurting ourselves by it also being in the calculation? It would be excluded from the, does that make sense?
I think so. So I think maybe what you might be referencing is, like, if we were to have sort of an unforeseen large capital expense occur during the fiscal year, whether we would be able to use, if there is sort of a surplus under the required minimum fund balance, using that for that emergency situation? Is that?
I, no. When we go into the FY26 budget season, you're going to recalculate the what the fund balance minimums are, right?
Yes.
And that's going to include 100% of all of the capital outlays for 2026.
Right.
But let's just say, going into that process, we have in excess of $3 million from FY25.
True.
Let's save it. Let's save it.
But, and let's say that instead of, instead of raising revenue by another $3 million next year, we're going to take that $3 million and spend it on street paving for FY26. Then that $3 million that's now being covered by excess in FY25 should not also be included as the, in the minimum fund balance. Does that make sense?
I think I understand what you're saying, and I think that is if we have a capital budget of $10 million in the general fund, and we know that $2 million is going to be used for street paving, and we want to use the excess for that $2 million, I think what you're saying is when we calculate the fund balance, we only account for 8% or 8.
8 million instead of 10, yeah.
I think we can look at that.
It's not clear in how it should be calculated. I just want to make sure that that's the case.
Right, right. And I think, sort of to your point before, I think there's a little bit of discretion in here in that, again, the Board of Commissioners are really the ones that decide how the funds may be used. And so I think, as I'd mentioned in the last meeting, this policy really triggers a review of fund balance, net position, how we're spending those monies every single year. And that, part of that will be certainly before the budget, but during the budget. And I think those are all discussions that we can have as part of the budget process. So I can think a little bit more about how we would word that in the policy, but I do think it creates, the policy as it exists now has a little bit of flexibility because the Board of Commissioners, you know, make that decision in terms of how those funds are spent.
Those were my only two comments. Thank you.
And I wanted to mention that, I'm so glad you used that word that you used at the last meeting, which is triggering the review.
Yeah.
That this policy would trigger the review. And I think Commissioner Gossett brought up some very, very, I thought, very serious points about how our annual year relevant to the budget is structured, and the fact that we do appear to have a very healthy surplus from our previous conclusion of our fiscal year. And some questions still remain unanswered about what are we going to do with that, and was it really needed in the first place, and maybe it belongs to the taxpayers and not to the city, or maybe not. So I'm kind of interested in your perspective on Commissioner Gossett's observations about that cycle that we have, and if we're going to look at it in deep detail, and whether or not this, this fund balance policy has an accompanying implementation plan that goes with it.
Yeah, so certainly that is, the implementation is what I'm most interested in as part of the budget process, but then also given some of the recent comments about us needing to look at the fiscal year. I think we also talked about property tax, the timing of the property tax. So we've recently started discussing that. But again, this is really, I think this policy will be evolutionary. This is our, the city's first attempt at a fund balance policy. So, yeah, I think certainly as we go into this upcoming fiscal year, we are going to look at this policy again and present it ahead of time before the budget meetings. And it may require, I mean, as it's written now, we're required to not only come up with a strategy, potential strategy on how to use some of the excess funds, but how to replenish in the example, the wastewater fund. So it's all stuff that, you know, I think we're excited to start looking at. It's just, we want to get the policy in place so we can start to have some of those discussions.
I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
So is there a motion or?
[inaudible]
Yeah. Is there a motion? Because, did you want to change anything?
No, no. I was just asking for clarification.
Come on, come ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm doing 102 St. Lawrence. Could we go to the very end of the policy? Okay. The city manager shall prepare a fund balance and net report for July, October, January, and April regular meetings, the Board of Commissioners, that provides a clear picture of the status of the fund balance and net position. That does not say that any change will be made by the commission. That is not what I think you have, from what you said earlier, Mayor, not what your intention is, but it's not what the policy says, and the policy should be corrected. I never knew, when I first saw this, when it said net positions, I thought you were talking about FTEs. So there's sort of two basic accounting principles. You could have accrual accounting, you can have cash accounting. What is this? I mean, maybe I'm just ignorant, but it doesn't portray a more transparent policy, because what you will have are four budgets a year. What you have today is a lot of money in the water fund that, I guess my first question would be, maybe our water rates are too high. And so it seems to me that this is a thing that will only be confusing to the public, will be difficult. Frankly, I don't, I don't understand how those calculations are done. It's, I would point out 459 on a Friday afternoon in August. I hope we could get some of these questions answered and have a full explanation. Why, what is net position? Why is it the right thing? Why do we have less money in the wastewater fund than we need? Is that really true? Why is it that we have $20 million in the water fund? Why is that? Is it really true? As somebody once said to me, a very good friend of mine who was a legislator, when in doubt, do nothing. And I think there are enough doubts that this should be carried over and reviewed further. Thank you very much.
Tom?
Tom Ganner, property owner in Rehoboth. The most competent guy in the room who should be weighing in on this is not seated there yet, and he'll be there in a month. And until Craig gets a chance to get in and look under the hood and see where the numbers are, you guys should do absolutely nothing per Bill's suggestion. And think about the last five, six months of your economic activities and undertakings. You guys collectively do not have the most great track record on data. You passed a tax increase on faulty data. Two weeks later, it was found that there's a $3 million overage. How on earth, eight months after the year ends, you know that there's a $3 million overage? Goes to the heart of bigger issues here than this policy, which should be built into part of an overall economic package of coherence. You lack any economic coherence. That's staff coordinated with budgeting, coordinated with the direction of the commission. Until that happens, you should do nothing further to damage it. Let the new people who had 1,100 people vote for them, get in and look at the numbers, and collectively, with the wisdom of folks who've been here, come up with an economic package, Stan, and an economic plan that is coherent, that has credibility, and that can rebuild the trust with the community. You're not there yet. Do not do this today.
Evan, is there any time constraint on this?
There's no time constraint at all. We welcome feedback. Again, this is the first fund balance and net position policy that we are putting together, so we welcome feedback. I had mentioned at the last meeting that we'd even be supportive of providing a copy to the Audit Committee to have them take a look at it and provide their feedback. We've provided a copy to the auditors, so we welcome the feedback, and there is no, certainly any rush on our end.
You know, I'm going to say this again, and I've been banging this drum since January about our city finances. Did not vote in favor of the budget, did not vote for the tax increase, and this is the most frustrating thing in the world. You may say that you welcome feedback. We may say that we welcome feedback, but I know that my feedback of almost the last two years has been listened to and then summarily dismissed. So I very much welcome the new perspective and people who can, maybe they can be heard, because I am exhausted, frustrated, and absolutely furious to have been trying to get at this, this information and straight, clear answers for month after month after month, and along with Commissioner Bennett, and he can speak for himself if he so chooses. So I cannot support this at this time for all of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Sharp, and I look forward to hearing the new commissioners that are seated here, because as I've said, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I've seen what I feel to be solid numbers in three years. And so I hope the new folks can uncover it.
Unless there's any objection, then I'd like to defer this to future time. Is that all right? Any objections up here?
No, I think that makes sense.
All right.
I'm going to object, but I'm the only one, so go right ahead.
All righty. Thank you. Thank you, Evan.
Thanks.
Next item of business. Discuss and consider an ordinance to amend Chapter 92, Section 38, titled Parking Restricted for Certain Vehicles Related to the Parking, Storing, or Leaving of Vehicles and Trailers. Patrick, you're sponsoring, I think?
Just as we discussed at the workshop, this has been a citizen's complaint, multiple complaints on prolonged parking of trailers and oversized vehicles on city streets and private property, presented last time, and worked with Alex and others to develop a resolution to this issue. And Amendment 9238, and it are currently in 9238, excuse me, it prohibits vehicles over 22 feet 3 inches or longer, or 8 feet 1 inch or wider, to park on a city street or parked anywhere within the city of the corporate limits. That's the exact language from the current code. What we are doing, or this is an attempt to do, is to expand that and to include trailers and provide clarification of what is defined as a trailer. Along with that, though, we have provided the six exceptions for that trailer parking, have outlined in the code, and that is parking allowable in a municipal parking lot, street parking for up to two days, primarily focused on moving vans and large deliveries, parked on private property if it's in a garage, if it's parked at a home if it's used for a business which is located and operated from that property, to continue with the licensed, an antique motor vehicle which is licensed by the State of Delaware, and if it is being used during active construction. So in a nutshell, that's what we talked about at the workshop, and that's where we are today. So open it for discussions or what have you.
Just one quick point, if I may. On line 56 of the ordinance in question, there's a stray number 24. I would suggest that be made a part of a motion.
50.
Just a formatting error. On line 56 of the ordinance.
Where, what number are you at?
Oh, I see it. Yeah.
Sorry, what?
On line 56, there's a stray number 24. Just a formatting error.
Right here, line 56. Also, I'd like to call your attention to line 53. I think this is errant also. It mentions 48 hours, which is correct, but it adds in any six-month period. I think that's
Yep.
extra, so that needs to come out.
That was added in response. Thanks for pointing that out, Mayor.
That needs to be in there?
That was added in response to your concern about folks moving their trailers a few feet and getting a new 48 hours. So 48 hours collectively in any six-month period.
So that, okay. So that's a new added.
Sorry, what was that?
Is this for vote?
This has the potential for a vote today, yes. But also note that under New Business Item D, there's a companion resolution setting a public hearing to amend Chapter 270 related to trailers and temporary structures. So there's a continuation of some of this.
But that is an independent action. Because it's in the zoning code, it cannot be discussed today.
Well.
But it's related to this. Why are you doing separate things?
But no action can be taken on it because it's in the zoning code, and you have to set a public hearing. And that's where the discussion will take place.
So why not put the two together? That's all I'm saying.
We're going to have a back and forth from the audience, Mayor.
No, we'll have, we'll have public comment in a minute.
So to bring it forward, I would like to make a motion for, to amend an ordinance to amend Chapter 92, Automobiles, Vehicles, and Traffic, Section 9238 of the Municipal Code of the City of Herbert Beach, relating to parking restrictions for certain vehicles.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Patrick Gossett, and a second by Commissioner Bonky to consider an ordinance to amend Chapter 92, Section 38, titled Parking Restricted for Certain Vehicles Related to Parking, Storing, or Leaving of Vehicles and Trailers. Want to open it to discussion up here first, but then I'll give the public the opportunity to speak.
An amendment or a motion to notice that line 20, line 56, the errant number 24 should be removed.
I'm not going to repeat it, but that'll be part of the motion.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Solicitor, does this proposal prohibit a resident from owning and storing in their driveway a small camper?
Not in itself with a companion ordinance, it would.
Thank you. Are we intending for that to be the case?
That would be the discussion at that redefinition or defining the definition.
That would be discussion under New Business D, correct?
We're not going to have today.
Discuss and consider a resolution. We can, no, we can discuss it. He misspoke.
I'm confused, Mayor. So we're about, we've got a motion to take action on something that we're going to discuss later in the day? later in the day?
No, what we have a motion on avoids including campers.
No, as I read it, it includes them. And our solicitor said it does.
Up here, it does. Can you point out the line number?
There's a difference between open and closed.
Trailers, not campers. If you read the definitions.
What line, what line number?
Definition. There's a definition of trailer. There's a definition of trailers in Chapter 92, which is the identical definition that the Delaware State Code includes basically any vehicle that's not motorized.
Objection. You just objected. Somebody talking to the audience, so I didn't pipe down. I did not give them reading the lines.
Mayor, point of order, point of order, Mayor.
Point of order. You're out of work.
I am done. Do you want to open it to public discussion? Can we go ahead?
No, I simply have a question for the solicitor. It's a yes or no. Does this, as drafted, prohibit a resident from having and storing in their driveway a small camper?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
If it would be helpful, I could just add a little more information to.
Nope, I don't need any more. I just needed a yes or no. Thank you.
I would like to hear a little more information on that comment.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. So you're allowed to store a trailer for up to 30 days in your driveway under this ordinance. The purpose of the companion ordinance is just to give meaning to this ordinance. So the companion ordinance just cleans up the zoning code, so that's harmonious with Chapter 92. The companion ordinance is not in itself intended to make any changes. It just makes the code speak together.
So let me ask you a second question, and solicitor. Would this prohibit a resident from having a small work trailer that they have and store in their driveway?
Yes.
Okay. So my next-door neighbor, who might have had or has a small work trailer that he may store in his driveway, this would prohibit that? Perfectly nice little trailer, uses it occasionally, this would prohibit that? Thank you.
Now, would there be an exception that if it's considered a construction site, then it would be a construction trailer, and he has time constraints on it?
I should add also that there is a mechanism to have a trailer on property through the Board of Adjustment. So you can get a special exception, but that would require applying to the Board of Adjustment.
So this has taken a bit of a life of its own, and I was very much in support of fixing the problem of the trailer on Henlopen, and now we've added stuff that further restricts people's property rights and what they can do on their private property, and I'm not in favor of that at all.
Well, I'm going to stick my neck out here because I'm not in favor of it. I think it's rushed and it's not ready for prime time. I think the intent is generally good, but I do think it is incredibly hard to regulate, legislate aesthetics. I'm still concerned, after reading it, with the impacts on visitors with trailer. There's one, where are we, right down the street here, family that rents a house, and they brought a nice, clean, beautiful-looking aluminum, raw aluminum trailer there to bring their coolers and their chairs and their bicycles and everything. And I don't have a problem with it. I do admit, though, I have a problem with the ugly trailer, and you know which one we're talking about. But again, I don't know how you legislate aesthetics. I'm also concerned about the impacts on contractors. I have an affinity for builders and stuff. You know, the average time to build a house, I've been told, say, 240 days, and yet we are, in this code, are only allowing an approximately 30 days within six months to have a trailer on site. And so I'm having trouble with that. And I told you the last meeting, I have had three houses around me under construction. The one directly next door was a whole house remodeled that took a year, and they had trailers and dump trailers and things there. Currently, that's finished, but on each side of that, next to me, there's two houses being built and under construction, and they've got trailers and things. And to me, that's a natural part of the viewscape when you're building a house, you know? And the same thing happened when I built my house. I had stuff on there. I happen to keep a much cleaner site than the subject house, but I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the Board of Adjustment. After 30 days, a contractor can go to the Board of Adjustment. I'm concerned that it's $1,000 each time you go to them. I don't know, over the course of that 240 days, 240 days to construct a house, whether the Board of Adjustment would grant them an extension of 30 days, and then they got to go back for another extension of 30 days and another extension of 30 days. I don't know whether we should give them guidance that says you can, I mean, right now, it's general, but I don't know whether we can give them guidance and say you can or should grant them more time rather than have to come back to them. I don't know whether we should give a discount on the $1,000 that we're imposing on them. Carolyn Defendorf, I thought had some good ideas in her letter, if you go back and read that, and use it, for me, the use of a municipal lot to put trailers on is not acceptable. I know the code in here says, it's at the discretion of the city manager, but personally, I want to give him direction that does not allow him to put trailers on there. I don't want to have it in writing to promote that trailers are out there. I know you've got the authority right now, without that written in there, that you can have trailers out there. And I know there are certain circumstances to do something like that, but otherwise, I am not favoring having that in the code, that we allow or promote the ugly trailers in the residential areas to be moved to the city hall parking lot. So I'm also, I guess I need a little more convincing that the legal and department reviews have been had. Certainly, I haven't had the opportunity to talk with them. So expose my views. There you go.
I have a question for point of clarification, then. So I guess this is kind of exciting, because if, we're pretty heavy-handed on sheds and accessory dwelling units, but if I hear where you're going on this, is I could put a camper in my driveway and use it as an office? And if so, I think that's great.
I don't know that's true because of the zoning code.
I'm having a little difficulty here. I mean, what we're dealing with, where this all sprang from is a nuisance, okay? We have a nuisance. We have a very difficult neighbor who, for whatever reason, has had this utility trailer, I guess, in their driveway for an inordinate amount of time. And I think that's really the issue. It's not so much that it's the trailer or the size of it, whatever it is, but it's been there too long. It's just been there so ridiculously long amount of time. And I think we ought to be able to establish, in this extremely wealthy city we have, some community standards, and I don't see how we can't do that. There's not four people here on this dais that can agree that we ought to be able to do that today, okay? So I may be talking to deaf ears or whatever, but I have a trailer. It's been sitting out in front of my garage for, I don't know, since, we used it to clean up Deauville Beach, and you know how that went. So I can put it in my garage. I have this big garage, and I can put it in the garage. I will put it in the garage. I'm going to promise I'm going to put it in the garage tomorrow, okay?
Doesn't bother me.
If we pass this, but I don't understand how this is, I think where this is going, is that we got to make this thing perfect. I don't think we have to make this thing perfect. I think we ought to be able to attend to this. You know, we can iron out some of the other details with regard to maybe give allowances to travel trailers or people who bring them in here for some, I mean, I think it's probably time limits, I think we're talking about. We're talking about time limits with regard to construction, with people bringing their trailers or want to have in their travel trailers here for a period of time, you know? But God, I can't understand why we can't say that you can't park your, you know, your unattractive, unnecessary trailer, just because you own one, in your driveway, and that you don't necessarily have to look at, but your neighbors do, so.
The problem is, Commissioner, is that's not what we've done here.
Well, let's, can we make some changes to make that happen?
Sure.
All right. Any shot we can do it today?
I don't know.
Again, we have a motion on the floor to adopt this. We're in the discussion phase among the commissioners. Then I want to go to the members of the public, and then it'll bring back to this table here to do whatever we're going to do. Is there any more discussion up here?
Is there anyone here from Building and Licensing? Because the issue was, I think the issue also revolved around what was a trailer, right? Wasn't this help define?
Mary Ellen, the city planners, out today.
I'm sorry?
Mary Ellen, the city planners, out today.
Okay.
And what I understand is that this has been going on for two or more years, and there's been discussion between the city manager, the acting city manager, the building and licensing department, city solicitor, and the chief of police. And there are no, again, this was reported back to me, there are no tools, if you will, in our ordinances that prohibit this. This is.
Prohibit this? What's the this? I think there is a this that you're talking about, right?
I'm sorry?
There is a this that you're talking about, right? We're all talking about a trailer on a certain street that is an ISOR, that is potentially a safety issue, that people have been complaining about for a long time and nothing's been done about.
Nothing's been done about.
But it wasn't just that, though. There was also a boat trailer, there was a motorcycle trailer, there were other trailers in town that were also, that complaints had come into, but we don't have anything, we don't have a definition of trailers.
Mm-hmm. They have multiple definitions of trailers.
Well.
We're, Commissioner, Commissioner Bennett, Commissioner Bennett, I just have a, this is ignorance on my part. Do you know, just, I don't know the answer. Are any of these parked, were these parked on the public streets? Or were they parked in their driveways?
It's a combination, so it depends on which case we're talking about, but there have been other trailers that staff received complaints on that were parked primarily on private property. The trailer that everyone keeps talking about has been on both private and the street, and then wasn't tagged, and now is tagged, and.
I mean, it seems to me, Commissioner Markert, that the easy thing to solve is what's on public property.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
What's on public property? We should be able to solve that pretty easily.
Sure.
But legislating what somebody has in their driveway? I don't care about your, I don't care about your little trailer.
I don't care.
It's been there for years, off and on.
Well, off and on.
Who cares? It's a nice little trailer.
Well, I'm happy.
Why should that be prohibited?
Because it may not be, in my case, it's not that obvious.
I understand.
But in other cases, it's very obvious.
I understand, but.
And I'm willing to abide by that.
I hear you, but.
Because I live in this town, so.
I guess the, I got correspondence from a person that really disturbed me, and it feels like it's embedded in this document. A person wrote to me and said, "There is no place in this town for people to have campers in their driveway." Who would say something like that?
I got the email. You must, I'm not.
You indicate, that's one.
Well, I wouldn't say.
Well, I don't know. I got it personally.
Is that something you've, is that an inalienable right? I mean, I don't understand that.
No, but should we be, to solve a problem that we all know exists, should we be talking about that? Again, we're using a sledgehammer to put in a thumbtack.
Well, on August 5th, at the workshop, where we had a lot of very sincerely upset constituents, full-time residents, property owners, et cetera, that have been dealing with this for two years minimum, three years possibly, and it was very clear that we had a discussion about what may have really started all of this was different staff interpretations that, over time, did not make this situation any better, only made this situation worse. We talked about, at great length, minute by painful minute, that the concerns that had been raised and responded to were not sufficient, and the time had come to take action. We agreed, I believe the majority of us, that prolonging this and maintaining the status quo does not move us forward, especially with the constituents that we represent. So my recollection was, we were not going to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And I think to Commissioner Markert's point, that we set, I believe, and I know I was part of it, set an expectation for our constituents, that we were moving in a direction that would be helpful to them. And now here we are again, re-discussing a lot of what had already been put forward on August 5th. Am I correct about that?
I think that's.
Is it fair?
It's a reasonable assessment.
I mean, I'm just trying to be fair of what was said and what conclusions we came to.
So.
I think we even wanted to vote that day.
Yes, we did.
Well, it was a workshop.
So question, was the issue of a small camper discussed at that meeting?
I don't believe it was drawn out in specificity. I don't recall it.
I don't.
I don't think so.
No.
Do you want to make an accommodation for a travel trailer for a period of time?
You said.
All right. Can we do that? How long? How long should you be able to have a travel trailer sitting in your?
As long as you want.
It'd be nice to have somebody offer that up.
Do you think we could pause and go to the members of the public?
Sure.
That'd be all right. Anybody like to speak on this topic?
Mayor, while you're doing that, could I ask the city solicitor to look at something? Could you look at the city charter, Section 31? It relates to obstructions, nuances, and unsanitary conditions? If that's something that could be applied?
Pause a minute.
Mean without a change.
Section what?
The city charter, Section 31. It talks about obstructions, nuances, and unsanitary conditions, and the authority that the city may have to have them removed. That's aside. You can go to public comment.
Do you want to let him answer?
Well, I wanted to give him time to look at it, and.
Okay, let him. Go ahead, if you don't mind.
Walter Birmingham, 123 Hempen Avenue. You're all doing good. It's good conversation, and you brought a lot of stuff out. I travel every day back and forth on Route 9. They built just at Cool Spring. They built just at Cool Spring, they built a new storage facility. It's full of recreational trailers. It's absolutely full. It used to be a case, years back, that you couldn't have trailers in town. Where they went, I don't know, but it's, everybody's got a lot of very good points here, and then you have people come in town and bring their towable trailer and put it next to a house, and plug it in, and they have an extra room next to the house. It's not a trick, it's not a cellar, it's not a basement or whatever. But, a couple of years ago, I'm very, very frustrated, people say I'm frustrated all the time, but I couldn't get the police department for a place on Byrd Avenue that had two construction trailers, and both of them were not registered, and Building and Licensing wouldn't do anything about it, and the police department wouldn't do anything about it, they weren't even licensed. Everything that you said here today needs to be popped away and go into a task force and discuss this, because there are too many things and it's not gonna get solved here today. Period.
Thank you, Walter. Chris Rochard.
My name's Chris Rochard, I'm a 25-year resident in the Pines. Thanks for all of your work. I'm not familiar with, I'm familiar with this topic, the issue, but I'm not familiar with the processes that you all do, so pardon me if I'm, speak out of turn. To me, it seems there's an easy line to be drawn with this specific concern of said trailer, and I, it's, to me, the line can be drawn on city property, i.e. the curb lane. It sounds like it's a much more complicated issue with trailers, whatever form, size, they take on your own property in your driveway, and if you don't have one, then you cannot park those types of vehicles, non-vehicular, truck, car, within a certain limit, bicycle, moped, et cetera. And if you don't have it, then you have to put it out of the city at a lot that you rent, or something like that. But to be taking these recreational vehicles that you're calling trailers, et cetera, and put those on the curb lane, where all of us residents either paying our taxes for a permit to be there, or out of pocket to do it, I think is unacceptable. That's all I have to say about it. It sounds like you, we, the issue has gotten much bigger than this one trailer. Let's address that one trailer, or others that are on the city property, not private property. And to me, that's, sounds like a no-brainer. You know, if you don't have room for it, you don't get to have it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Would you like, uh...
I could just quickly respond to your question about the charter, section 31, so...
Alex, speak up and into that microphone.
Into the mic, sorry about that. So, to the extent you're concerned about one specific property, one problem trailer, you could adopt an ordinance under section 31 of the charter, declaring a nuisance or obstruction, and order that person who is responsible to abate the problem. But if you're adopting an ordinance, that's a global solution, and you shouldn't be targeting an individual property through an ordinance. But this current agenda does not notice a resolution to declare something a nuisance, so we could do that at a future time, if you'd like.
Understood, thank you. Well, I'm, oh, never mind.
No. Tom, Tom, and then John Dewey, and then Lisa.
Tom Ganner. So, Alex, I'm glad you just got to the bill of attainder, because this record basically sets up a bill of attainder. You guys all wanna pass a legislative initiative to attack one woman in this town. And I, if I were sitting up there, I'd be embarrassed to even be talking about this. And if I were drafted it on behalf of a bunch of loud neighbors who have put in some of the most vitriolic and obnoxious emails that I've ever seen on behalf of a group of entitled people, I, I would be embarrassed to even consider this. It is a, I drove by 149 Henlopen today. It's, it's a trailer that's smaller than a Prius. And so what? It's on a public street, and there are mechanisms available in the vehicular code, there are mechanisms available in the nuisance code, and more importantly, not a single one of you has talked to the woman. It goes back to my point earlier. Not a single one of you has thought about a creative solution, or to act as a mediator to try to figure out a solution. You reacted to a bunch of connected folks, because we all know the names, we all know who's, who's driving this, and you're gonna pass a legislative initiative to attack one woman on a trailer that isn't really that obnoxious. Think about the unintended, you know what, I'm, I'm speaking, I'm speaking, you're not. The unintended consequence is people like that coming after you for your pickup truck in the Oaks neighborhood. And if you don't think that that is gonna be a direct consequence of inviting the kind of vitriolic, Stasi-type neighbor attacks, you are sadly mistaken. You have a bunch of entitled people who wanna attack one woman and her trailer that has other mechanisms available to the state, you are gonna open up a can of worms you are gonna regret to the day you leave Rehoboth. Because these people are not gonna stop if they get the state to pass a law against one woman and her trailer. Then it's gonna be, "Hey, Stan, your pickup truck in the Oaks doesn't belong." And don't think that that's not gonna be an unintended consequence of this type of completely reprobated legislation. You, you guys are better than this, I hope. They're not.
You're wrong. Matt, we-
You don't even know who I am.
Matt, 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 we got John, Lisa, and then you.
All right. John Dewey, 105 Scarborough Avenue, speaking only for myself, not any other city organization or group that I belong to. My partner and I have both written letters. I thank everyone on the commission for having taken the time to review what I have sent in. My purpose today is not to re-educate you, you have already had that information, but to provide further information for members of the public who may not have taken the time to review that. This is not a one-person problem. This is a problem both in North Rehoboth and in South Rehoboth. We have a residential lot in our neighborhood that, when I left to come over here today, had a closed utility trailer and two open trailers loaded with I don't know what was in them. In the past, I have seen fully intact refrigerators in those trailers, kids playing around those lots, mattresses from heaven knows where they came out of, air conditioners, other forms of household cleanouts, because they're being used to support rental properties. So, we have a dual problem of an inappropriate use of a residential lot, plus that inappropriate use has led to, the preferred word today seems to be nuisance, trash, and, you know, closed-up refrigerators, filthy mattresses, heaven knows what else is lurking in those trailers. This is a complex situation. I understand it, there's a lot of strong feeling around this in both ways. What this is not is a one-person problem. This is a problem across the city, it has gotten out of control, it is time to address it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, I forgot who's next. Lisa? No, go ahead, Lisa. Walter, we'll give everybody else a chance first, thank you.
I'm settling in for a long comment here. Actually, no, I'm not, three minutes. So, thanks for the time. So, my comments, obviously, on this amendment, and basically, I wanna start with Commissioner Gossett did state at the beginning that this ordinance was developed based on neighbors' concerns regarding trailer parking on city streets. There was no mention of neighbor concerns from Commissioner Gossett, who authored this ordinance, regarding camper trailers, trailers on private property, et cetera. So, you, so, while I support my neighbors from Henlopen Avenue and other places regarding this trailer that's been parked on Henlopen Avenue, I think there, there probably is some sort of safety issue there, for sure, you know, and other places, maybe, where there's safety purpose, for safety purposes. But the current amendment goes way beyond this narrow problem. For example, the city solicitor just today, just today clarified that this current ordinance, as stated, as being presented, as being looked at to vote on, includes camping trailers, not just trailers, camping trailers, boat trailers, and by the way, the way the accompanying amendment reads, "Stan, you can't have a pickup truck." That's the way it's defined in there, because it's not well thought out, it was shoved in. I don't know when this amendment came into existence, this accompanying amendment, I've never seen it, I've never seen this expanded definition of trailers. All of a sudden, it's here for a public hearing, and it's gonna impact something you're voting on today without further discussion? I think overall, this, this proposed amendment includes conflicting definitions, as I just said. It adds this applicability to private property, which, as Commissioner Gossett, the author of this amendment, said, this was designed for a trailer on public property. As I said already, the related amendment that you're gonna be discussing changes the definition of trailer, expands it to even a pickup truck, quite frankly, but certainly expands it to other things like camping trailers. And basically, I walked around every street, I drove around every street today, and you know how many camping trailers are on private property? Take a guess. Anybody? Okay, you're not gonna answer me, that's okay. One. You know whose property it's on? Mine. There's one. One. You are changing and putting in place an entire ordinance to target one resident, one full-time resident, is now what this includes. It's not addressing just the problem that, again, I support my neighbors on Henlopen have, and they'll talk more about it. You know, the stated government purpose, well, I guess I'm done. My recommendation is amend the change to chapter 92 to restrict parking of trailers on city property, clarify, but don't pass this today. It is not ready unless you make some changes that only address the narrow problem that we have here from Henlopen. Thank you.
Matt, go ahead. Matt Gaffney, 140 Henlopen. I live across the street and down one from the trailer that we're all familiar with. If there was an ugly trailer competition, this baby would win, hands down. I am one of the ones that brought this to the attention of the commissioners, along with my husband. This has been going on for two years. Stan, this is not a construction trailer. Construction trailers come, they do their job, they build the house, they leave within a few months. We all tolerate those, because they know they're here for a certain period of time and then they're gone, and we have an improved property to show for it. I'm fine with that, I've put up with that myself numerous times. That's not what we're dealing with here. We're dealing with a dilapidated piece of junk, sitting currently in the public right-of-way. It has also been in her front yard. It makes really no difference to me, my view is the same. The view shed on Henlopen Avenue, one of the prettiest streets in this town, is ruined by that trailer, and I have talked to the owner, and I am also proud of everything I have put in writing about this subject. So, I have talked to the owner repeatedly about this, it's still there. It's not as if there hasn't been communication with the owner. So, I support what Patrick is proposing. I support the commissioners taking action, giving some relief to what we have been dealing with for over two years. And if you've not seen the trailer at 149A, A, Henlopen Avenue, I invite you to drive by. I don't think anybody in this room would want to look at that for two years. Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Anybody else? Anybody else? Harvey?
I second. This involves both on-street parking and on-private property parking. When it, just so you, I've looked at ordinances from over 300 towns and cities around the country. It is not unheard of, in fact, in many small communities that attract tourists, whether they're beach towns, mountain towns, lake towns, small historic towns, they actually ban trailers from parking on public streets at all, or for more than 12 hours. They ban them on private property in many cases, unless they're enclosed. They ban them from front yards, even for 24 hours, unless they're enclosed. They ban them from side yards. We're dealing here with a classic dispute between property rights and the greater interest of the community. And that's why we elected you all to make those tough decisions. Okay? Nothing's perfect. And yes, this does apply to camping trailers. There's no definition being changed. The definition of trailer in chapter 92 is not being changed by this. It includes horse trailers, camping trailers, utility trailers. It's been what Commissioner Gossett has gone back to since day one. Okay? Let me say something about camping trailers, and also about this situation. It's not a question of whether this is pretty, or junky, or whatever, that's really not what this is about. It, it's about the use of space, and as one of you said, and this is why many towns and cities ban camping trailers and recreational vehicles, even on private property, you might as well not have an open space requirement, you might as well not have a front yard requirement, you might as well not have a side yard requirement. You're, you might as well, and I have seen this, it doesn't happen often, but it's gonna happen more, you find people who have guests who pull in with a camping trailer, and they live on that property for a week or two. They plug in to the electrical. You have no ordinance here that prohibits use of a camping trailer for an office, for living, for anything. Now, we used to think that the city didn't allow that, and it's true, Mayor, the city, it, it happens so infrequently, and people used to call the city manager, and the city manager would call someone, say, "You know, we don't really allow these camping trailers here," and they would be moved. But now, you, you've seen it today, you've read in the newspaper, people saying, "Well, you can't enforce this, or if you do this, I'm gonna do that." We saw something in the paper and, and on the news last night, that said, "Well, if you ban a trailer, I'm gonna buy a moon, a moonshine..." Excuse me. The mayor controls the meeting, not you. You have, um, you, you, I'm almost done, Mayor, thank you for, um, um... You, you have, you have this occurring, this is the time to deal with it before it gets out of hand, and I encourage you to pass this. And if you need to change it in three months, or whatever, you can do it, but this is separate from the zoning code. This is the parking ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. We've got a three-minute limit, I know you came in late. State your name and relationship to the city, please.
My name is Assey Johanna, I live on 12 Dover Street. I don't believe that you need to touch private properties. If you, I paid top dollars to all my property. If you don't like the color of my house, or if you, whatever, I can do whatever I wanna do in my private property. Public property, uh, city property, I understand, safety, it's important, but to go after, I mean, to go after one woman, just because she's a neighbor of a commissioner, and do a mafia kind of thing to just hurt her, it really pisses me off. You are elected to look after the best interests of the city, not to get back at your neighbors. And, um, and if, I have a camper that is 15 foot long, smaller than a minivan, you're not, you cannot prohibit me from, like, having my minivan in my property. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello again. How's everybody? Getting tired.
Say your name again, Forrest.
Seeley Garrity, on Henlopen Avenue with the problem trailer.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so first of all, whatever you do with your ordinance, I don't have a backyard. Sure. Okay, how are you doing?
There you go, thank you.
That better? Better? Okay. First of all, I don't have a backyard, I have one space in my driveway. I tend to back in, because I have some mobility problems, and that allows me to unload it. I have-
I have never, in the entire two years and two months that the trailer's been on my property, been cited for it, given a ticket for it, et cetera, et cetera. It is legally licensed, it has plates, it has lights, reflectors, the whole nine yards. So I fail to see how it is more of a hazard to people on the street than a car parked on the side of the road. Okay? Now, in terms of this, none of you have spoken to me about it. My neighbor, who says he's talked to me several times, actually had the police called on him because he spent his time talking to me cursing at the top of his lungs from the middle of the street. There may be an ax to grind there. Okay? The police have told him to stay away from me. Now, that aside, the trailer was going to be gone in another month or two, but I'm glad I enraged a community spirit, have a community action to try to get organized. That touches my heart. However, when you get into whether it's ugly or not, you're in a big slippery slope. It's legal. It's registered. Could they have come to me and said, could you paint it so it's one color? Could you put a camouflage tarp over it? No, no one's made any suggestions on how to make this more aesthetically pleasing. Could I put it on my driveway? With pushers on each side, nobody's said a word. So I'm just going to say this. If I need to remove my trailer, because I'm not going to pay storage for it someplace, they may not like the truck I buy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Yes.
Hello, Eric Mugly, Henlopen Avenue. I've prepared my comments because I want to make the most of your time. First of all, we have, we're in 149B, and we have asked Seeley about moving her trailer or how long it's going to be there. She has promised that it would be gone or that it would be eliminated from the property four times, and it hasn't been. Also, the hitch, in terms of its safety issue, the hitch many times is left hanging into the street on a cinder block, and it's very dangerous for the bicycle riders that ride back and forth on Henlopen Avenue, which is part of the path. And then on the weekends of, I mean, the days of the farmer's market, there are cars backed up back and forth against each other, and people cannot see that hitch as they drive by and they ride by, and if an accident hasn't happened yet, it's going to happen real soon because that trailer, because it's so stick-like in its figure, cannot easily be seen, especially when the hitch on the cinder block is sitting in the right-of-way. But my main point is, I used to see rare trailers parked on the streets in Rehoboth property. In the last few years, it's been much more predominant. People leave their utility trailers, their motorcycle trailers, their camping trailers on the street and on the property for many weeks. It's time to put a stop to this, especially when people take advantage, like is being done at 149A, Henlopen Avenue, and basically putting a finger to the community about what can be done and what can't be done, as was said by somebody at the workshop a couple weeks ago from the front of the room. Your changes are fair and reasonable according to the documentation you've put forth, and other small towns have put more restrictions on changes than what we're proposing here. So your ordinance is a good balance between here, especially because you have some reasonable exceptions in the ordinance. Today is the time to vote on this, to eliminate this hazard, and to not waste any more months at the risk of community health, and I please vote in favor of this ordinance as it has been written.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak that has not spoken yet? Go ahead.
Jamil Berto, 138 Henlopen. I live directly across the street from 149A. I completely agree with my neighbor who just spoke, so I'm not going to, you know, go into all the same issues, but I do urge you to vote in favor today to adopt the proposed ordinance as written, to amend Chapter 92, Section 38. I think as a community, we need to think about the character of Rehoboth. I mean, I've taken several long walks the last few days. I mean, Rehoboth is beautiful. Then, at the end of my walks, I arrive home to see the trailer across the street. It's a sad situation. There are so many options available to the owner of that small cottage to obtain renovation and landscaping supplies, but there doesn't seem to be any room for compromise. So we are here asking for your help as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamil. Anybody else? Come ahead.
Mike Bova, Carroll, we just moved in four weeks ago, 136 Henlopen. This is not against a poor old lady. We need to stop that verbiage. This is against a trailer, not a person. I had a trailer where I used to live. It wasn't so everyone else could see it. Everyone's toys or possessions, they like them, but not everyone else does. Last week, when Smiling Joe came home, the Secret Service bomb dogs not only sniffed the trailer once, they came back again and sniffed it again, they were that concerned. And I've heard from a lot of reliable people that this has been ongoing since Joe goes back and forth. It's just going to get worse because someone's coming home to stay in Rehoboth a lot longer. And it's not the issue of one trailer. You let one trailer go, you want to see 25 of them. What if Sally down the street takes a part-time job being a bus driver? Is that going to be allowed to park in front of her house? Seriously? One turns into 20 and 40 and 50. This city is beautiful without trailers. Let's make restrictions on certain things, there's plenty of places to store them all around. I'll help the trailer's owner find a place to put it at the best cost we can. We don't need trailers. Campers is another issue. This town is pristine. I like it that way. I spent a fortune to come here because I like it that way. This city has a reputation of that. Go to other beach towns, go to Atlantic City and all those places, and Wildwoods. Why did we choose this? I don't want Wildwoods. I'm fortunate as heck to be here, and my family is here. I didn't want to go somewhere else. Don't open a giant can of worms. It's not against a person, it's an object. It has to be stopped or more welcome. What, do you see them on every street in here? It can happen. A lot of people own a lot of toys and things. What if they all came down here? It would not be the same city. We all didn't move here to see that. There are places for them. In front of my house is not one of them. I was shocked, it's a permanent fixture. I'm dumbfounded, actually, and it is a security risk. There are places for those. Let's respect the people that have them, but let's put them in a respectful place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else? Walter, keep it shorter than three minutes if you don't mind.
Walter Brittingham, 123 Henlopen Avenue. I read the ordinances, the two different ordinances, and I'll keep this very short. I was very concerned that the city manager could commit to the city hall parking lot. If something's going to get parked, let it go out to Public Works or go out on the highway to some rental agency. Our biggest problem we're having is about enforcement. This is just one more enforcement item. Couple months ago, there was a meeting about Summer House and we told you about the freezers, refrigerated units. They're behind the library and at Summer House, and as you all started out hours ago, it seems like those refrigerated units, they're trailers that don't have motors in them. They would have to go, so no place to drink. But really what I wanted to tell you about was, we've sat through, it seems like four years about basements, and this discussion here today about trailers has brought up stuff that ought to be able to be talked about at community meetings. Well, this is a community meeting and you're hearing what's happening. It's not about the trailer on Henlopen Avenue. But I really want to tell you what's the most important thing. Don't treat this like though they'll not do anything about it. It shouldn't be done today, but it should go after the swearing-in of the new people. And a community meeting where it come in and identify what the problems are and then find out how to solve them. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter.
I know I'm making a second comment.
That's fine, if you keep it under, shorter than normal.
Yeah, thanks.
I want to reiterate what Chris Richard said at the very beginning as the first comment, is I actually think you can't address the concerns of all of our neighbors by just, you know, just modifying this to say it's applicable to city property at this point in time. If you want to address the things he brought up and others brought up, do it later, but right now, you could solve their problem by just focusing this on trailers in public, on public property. That would, I think, solve it for now, and then you can address things that haven't been addressed in the, you know, yet. Never talked about trailers, now all of a sudden it's trailers with one meeting. So I think if you narrowly scope this for now and talk about public, you know, trailers in public roads or city roads, you could actually pass something and address the issue. That's my take on it.
Everybody, I gave Walter a minute and her a minute, can you try to add here?
I'll be less than a minute. Stick to your gut and stick to your, this is going to be one of the rare, if not probably only occasions, we agree. You said it was sloppy, you said it was rushed, you said it was ill-thought-out, and it wasn't ready for prime time. Exactly, exactly, exactly. This is an unconscionable rush, 6 o'clock on August 16th, in the middle of the dead zone of August, on a Friday night, to do this to penalize one person. And enough of you have said one person is the issue, to have an awful record, and ask Alex what that means. This is not the way to go. Punch it over for a month. There's no harm to anybody for one month delay. This is not the time to do it.
Thank you. Matt, come ahead.
Actually, there was a workshop.
Say your name again.
Matt Gaffney, 140 Henlopen. There was a workshop, this is not the first time this has been discussed. I would like to, with all deference to my friend Lisa Schlosser, who probably won't like me after I say this, but I agree with the intention of the ordinance that you're proposing, Patrick. I don't think in a town that is one square mile with lots 50 by 100 in most cases, that we need to have trailers in driveways. Yes, we only have one now, but who knows what's going to happen? Do we want to open that Pandora's Box? I don't want to have to look at that. I don't want a trailer myself. I don't think it's appropriate for Rehoboth, for the town that we live in, for trailers to be parked on private property or public property. And I'm sorry if you don't agree, but I honestly feel that way. Thank you.
Last call? I'm trying to keep it short.
30 seconds. It's been said, this trailer and others have been on private property and public property. Okay? And so, please let the record reflect that when you vote. And also, this is not against one person or a junky trailer, as I said before, and I ask you to keep in mind, this is the concept of do we want trailers, regardless of how expensive or beautiful or whatever. Is that what we want, to be sitting in people's yards or on the street for long periods of time? The exceptions are fair, they're balanced, I ask you to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to bring it back to the commissioners. If you recall, we have a motion on the table that was seconded. The motion was to adopt the ordinance before us related to Chapter 92 amendments. Is there any further discussion up here?
Yeah, I have a couple of points that I'd like to raise. One is, the problem that I have with this as it's drafted is the reasonableness of it. If in fact what one of the commentators said, that this is, there's one camper in the town, I know that camper, and I think it is probably factually correct that a Chevy Suburban is larger than that camper. Factually correct. So do we ban Chevy Suburbans from people's private driveways? Do we not like that? Where's the reasonableness factor in this proposal?
Can I respond to that?
There isn't one. No, I don't want a response yet. When I'm finished, you can answer.
Okay, I didn't know if you were finished.
I've lived on a street with a neighbor who has had a work trailer for years. It's never bothered me. Maybe it should have. Maybe it should have, but it didn't. Still doesn't. I still think it's fine in this small town. It's a perfectly normal little work trailer. He keeps it maintained, he uses it, lets me use it if I need to. It's what neighbors do. So the reasonableness piece of this really matters here. And the fact that it appears that there have been changes made at the last minute also disturbs me, that we're voting on something that may not be fully exposed in the middle of the summer, where people may not be paying attention. And if it's true what Walter says about the refrigeration trailers at Summer House needing to be removed, do they know about this? That they'll be impacted by this? An important business to our town that's been around for generations? Do they know about this? I don't think so. It feels rushed, even though it feels like we've been talking about it for forever. The decision-making on this now feels rushed. I don't know why, but it does. So I think we should at least move this to when we have the public hearing on the next piece of this that's attached to it, and deal with them as one, and not deal with it at two different times. It doesn't, it feels, it's not how we should be doing business. Separate the two things and then take two separate votes. I don't think we should do that. So Commissioner Markman, I'm happy to hear your response.
No, the only thing I wanted to offer up is...
Sorry, if the mayor is okay with it. I'm sorry, I'm not the mayor.
Is it okay for me to respond? Again, I respect your comments, I respect your point of view. We've listened to many people, you know, I think this is a way, it's messy, but that's kind of how government works, tries to work. I feel I fall on the side of the community. That's kind of the way.
I'm sorry, that is out of bounds.
Why?
If you're going to make those kinds of comments, it's not a friendly comment, Commissioner. I am not on the side of not being on the side of the community. Sorry.
I was speaking for myself.
Yeah, but it's implied that you're suggesting that I wasn't. That is not the case.
I will withdraw that statement, I'm sorry. I think that there are accommodations made in the ordinance that we're looking to amend, and I think it's possible that there could be other accommodations made if we felt that they were important. Possibly, I mean, you know, I'm looking in terms of the nature of this town. It's not that, you know, we are a recreational town, people come here for vacation, people are supposed to be happy here, they're supposed to have fun here, you know? I mean, it seems anathetical that we're having this kind of heated discussion about a happy place, or a place that's, you know, is a balm to people. So, you know, and I don't have any, I don't have any particular fault about any particular thing, but if you take it in totality, what Mr. Schulman says, you know, is this what we, is this what we want? And I frankly, I've seen the trailer, I wouldn't want it. I wouldn't want it for me, and I don't know if, whether my trailer is in play or not. I'm happy to hide it away and put it in my garage. I'm happy to hide it away and put it in my garage where it belongs if that makes everybody happy. You know what I mean? I don't feel like I have an inalienable right to have my trailers sitting out there. I just, that's where I put it because I was using it. But I, you know, I can put it away. It's not a problem for me. Or I could put it somewhere else or pay for it to store it somewhere else. I could do that if that's what it takes to have it. So accommodations can be made, and the same with any other trailer that people have, like a camper trailer or something like that, you know? Is it acceptable during the summer months where you might be using it or might be going out and taking your trailer out that you can't park it in your driveway for a month or something like that? I don't know. Come with a timeframe. You may not want to keep it there the whole time, you know? I mean, we can decide that. But I think what we have right now is reasonable.
But it doesn't do exactly what you just said. It doesn't make those accommodations.
I know, but I'm just saying, what we have now is reasonable. Can we make it a little more reasonable? Yeah, I think we probably can. But I just feel like we've been, again, we've had numerous conversations this afternoon about, you know, kicking things down the road and not kicking things down the road. I felt at the very least, from coming to this meeting today, that we would be able to do this, that this very thing. And, you know, I don't know if we're going to drag it over the goal line or not. I don't know. You know, but, you know, I feel we are setting the standards based on what people here in this town want, I feel they want, the majority of those people want, not the minority. The minority is one person. You know, we have, I don't know, 10 people, a dozen people here talking about, you know, something they don't like. And I think that's what we should be listening to.
Don made one suggestion that we defer this until the public hearing for the later item.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a motion on the floor.
I'm not finished. So you all have the opportunity to withdraw your motions and then we can defer. Otherwise, there's a motion on the floor and I'll call.
The reason that I asked, the reason that I made this point was only for us to have the chance to talk about the reasonableness. Again, I raised the point about the Chevy Suburban being larger than the trailer that Lisa Schlosser has in her driveway, the camper trailer. Is, you know, where is the reasonableness in this? And so if we spend another minute talking about the reasonableness of this and what we're really trying to get at, I think we can solve this problem.
Chevy Suburban is usually driven, moved around.
I understand.
It's not parked for a long period of time.
It's a vehicle.
It's a vehicle.
I understand. You understand the point. You don't be dense.
All righty, I'm going to call a question. We're doing a roll call vote. Again, I rotate who I start with. The motion on the floor, of course, is to adopt what is in front of us. Commissioner Gossett?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Markert?
Aye.
Commissioner Preston?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain. I am disturbed that there were changes made to this last minute. Some, it might even be considered targeted to an individual. And I don't think that we've had enough time to fully vet this.
And the chair votes no. And as I indicated earlier, well, I gave my reasons for the no, but I also think it needs to be carried through and tweaked. So with that, it carries, there's four yeses, two nos, and one abstention. Thank you very much. Thank you for everybody that spoke up. Next item of business, I'm determined to get through this. Tony and Tim, I'm sorry to put you through. Next item of business is to discuss and consider creating a task...
Mayor, may I make a point? We have the opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting as commissioners. We have the opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting as commissioners. Is that correct?
Comment.
Thank you. I have some comments to make about the topic that we just discussed at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Our next, last item of old business, which is to discuss and consider creating a task force to develop a mixed-use zoning ordinance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'll be presenting this item this evening. So following the adoption of the CDP...
I'm sorry. Folks, I'm sorry, thank you.
The Board of Commissioners and Planning Commission participated in an exercise to rank and prioritize the 88 total action items of the CDP. Of those 88 items, 10 were identified as a top priority, and one of those specifically included the development of a mixed-use classification in the City of Rehoboth's zoning ordinance. So the goal this evening is to gain your consensus on moving forward with a task force comprised of representatives from several suggested entities, including two representatives from the Board of Commissioners, two representatives from the Planning Commission, two representatives from the builder development community, and another local representative, a representative from Rehoboth Beach Main Street, and two business and/or citizen representatives for this task force. It would be advisory to the Board of Commissioners and to the project consultants. Solicitation of membership would be through application, and it would be developed and posted on the city's website. Membership is by appointment of the mayor with confirmation by the commissioners, and the task force would be time-limited with an end date to be determined, but it would be expected to sunset by September of 2025 at the latest. It would meet on a regular basis, six times over a 10- to 11-month period, and all meetings would be open to the public and meetings would be noticed. Quorum must be present and meeting minutes would be taken and compliance with FOIA. There is a proposed timeline in the agenda item report, which I won't take up more of your time going through, but I'm here to answer any questions you may have. And again, staff is looking for your consensus to move forward on this proposed work group.
But we typically formally vote to form these task forces. We did that for Stormwater Utility, which had 12 members on it. We did that for the Wilmington-Baltimore Streetsgate Task Force that had 12 members on it. And so at the end of this conversation, I expect somebody to have a motion to form this task force. One question that is in front of us that Taylor mentioned is what is the final composition of this task force that we want? You see up on the screen is the mention of proposal for two representatives of the Board of Commissioners, two representatives of the Planning Commission, two from the builder community, another local representative, representative from Main Street, and two business and/or citizen representatives. I don't know how you interpret two business and/or citizen representatives. To me, that could either be two total or four total. So, you know, so we need to discuss that and resolve that. Also, I just wanted to point out that the timeline on this is, you saw this before, so this isn't the first time we've seen it. The timeline has just changed slightly to allow us adequate time to formalize this committee, create the application, solicit memberships, and then select members and get them voted in place. Open it to the floor for what people would like to see as the final composition of this task force.
I'm going to say the same thing I said last time, that I think this has been a long time coming. And the only concern I've got about the representation on the task force is, and I don't want to micromanage this at all, but I would just offer that there needs to be equivalent citizen representation to either elected or Planning Commission members or businesses. Just make sure that it's really nicely balanced, I think, so that we, so that you will avoid criticism at the end of the day.
If you recall, during the application and selection process for the Stormwater Utility, I made my selections or nominations and put them forward, and you all essentially rejected all of them and said, "We want to appoint everyone on there." So there is an opportunity, I guess, where we could just advertise and solicit and receive applications and bring those in front of you, and then the decision could be made at that time, if you want to go that way without finalizing the numbers today. Anybody else?
My only comment is just for, if it can be defined, point three there, it talks about two representatives building development community and another local representative. What is the concept of other local? How is that defined or are there any qualifications or just curious?
I think that's to address, depending on what kind of applicant we get, so if it's an architect or something like that, that's not necessarily a builder, but it would be just, I believe that's meant to be two representatives, not three.
Well, it says and, so I'm curious. And then on the bottom line, it says two business and/or citizen representatives. I concur with Commissioner Sharp. I think it should be two business and two citizen representatives. And also, at least one of the business representatives should be the owner, not a tenant, in the property so that they, they may have observations or whatever, but if they're only there for a short period of time renting or a couple of years or what have you, so it should be an owner of the property.
Property owner.
Property owner, not a tenant.
Not necessarily the business owner.
And then just curious, what is the role or relationship of the building and licensing departments involved in this task force? I don't see any inclusion of them. So other than the Wallace Montgomery, but it seems to me that since they will be either implementing or have background information on what's going on, that they should have a representation on the task force.
Yeah, so Mary Ellen Gray, our community development, well, building licensing director, will serve as an ex officio member and help the board task force, you know, move forward and provide staff support to the task force. So that department will definitely be involved.
And also, and the, not a page number, but the last paragraph there before the proposed timeline, talks about the first and second meeting of the focus will focus on agreeing to main tenants, i.e., it doesn't mention parking. And I'm curious that that should be at least considered as one of the tenants.
Okay.
Because with retail, hotel, no mention that, and this may come forward in the design, but there's no discussion of any public listening sessions or any charrettes to be conducted for any of this. So again, you have the makeup of the task force and they're open in public meetings, but it would seem to me that on such a major change to our zoning, that public input or charrettes or something of this nature should at least be considered as part of the process. And maybe my final point here is, since this will eventually, if whatever happens with it, will be, have an impact on the zoning code, which I'm assuming that's what will occur, that because of that and looking at our litigious society today, that this should be brought back to us, and I fully support this going forward, but that this should be put in a resolution format to be adopted by the commission as opposed to just a simple vote of this sounds like a good idea, but for a resolution with specific outlines of what is to be accomplished and who's responsible and et cetera, again, based on the fact that this has an impact or potentially has an impact on the zoning code. Those are my only comments.
So you're saying defer on voting tonight?
No, no, I would keep it forward, moving forward. I think that, you know, we're already behind on the timeline, as you mentioned.
They'll vote to formalize it.
Correct.
But then in addition, you want a resolution?
I would look to the solicitor to that for an opinion, but again, for the impact of the potential impact on the zoning code, I think a firm foundation of going forward on this, that would, that's my opinion and experiencing this before, but that's just what I would suggest.
Thanks, Commissioner. We could certainly do that. We could have a vote today and then go back and paper the logic behind this action to help explain any zoning changes in the future.
Thank you.
Any further comments up here?
I have some questions. I may have this wrong, but I thought we were trying to limit our engagement of Wallace Montgomery, just more broadly. Is that, am I right about that? Have we talked about that because of the costs associated with it?
I have a similar understanding, Commissioner. I thought that with hiring a community development and planning director that we would be limiting the use of Wallace Montgomery. So I'm quite, I'm not really quite sure why we're still using them.
So from my understanding, we, so Mary Ellen is the director of that department, but she's, we don't have a city planner, so...
I thought she was the city planner. That's what we were told.
Yeah, so she's the director of the department, so they're still having to use some labor from Wallace Montgomery.
Is she qualified as a city planner?
I believe she's an AICP certified, you know, planner, so...
The answer, I think the simple answer is yes, she's got the designation.
So anyway, this is the plan put forth by staff, but I can definitely look into all of this further for you.
Just curious, I just, I know we talked about this at a previous meeting that we were limiting, and I think Evan was the one who was questioned about limiting the use of Wallace Montgomery and sort of, you know, stepping back from that. It's, you know, what are the costs associated with this, I guess, is a more simple way of addressing it. And just a more broad question about the objective here, and I've raised this before. It looks like, it says with, in the italicized text under the introduction, it says, there's a clause that says with appropriate design guidelines and standards. So just a question about the makeup of the group. Are we then to assume that there are people that are on this group who are qualified professionally to be opining on appropriate design guidelines? Are we headed towards something that I have talked about privately with Commissioner Markert, not as a commissioner, but just as a neighbor, about architectural design and how our town looks and feels? Is that what we're getting at here? Is that part of the mission of this group?
So I believe the true mission at hand is having some kind of way to have mixed-use zoning, so where you would have residential and commercial together.
So the look and the feel of that?
I think it would probably include some guidelines related to, I mean, you'd have everything from a landscaping plan to a parking plan to everything.
And so...
But perhaps not finishes.
Two representatives of the Board of Commissioners? That sounds great, but my guess is that none of us are qualified to be, we might have a view, but an unprofessional view about how something might, you know, look 20 years from now, how it fits and feels with a town like ours. I don't know. It's just a question, I've asked this before about the Planning Commission as well, the qualifications of folks to be there. But if that's where we're headed, I think it's a more serious question.
Yeah, so in my point of view, the professional planners, whether that's our own director or Wallace Montgomery, would be bringing the professional opinions to you.
Okay, because they haven't done a very good job so far.
So my goal would be to get that to you, yes.
Okay, that's it for now.
Anybody else up here?
I just want to confirm, so I think we were, I think what I've heard from other comments, that the two representatives from builder or development community, or a like business representative, or someone in that field, correct?
You're trying to define another local representative?
Yeah, and essentially it would be someone in that field, right? If they're not a builder, developer, they could be an architect, engineer, or something like that.
That's what I was hoping could be found, as an architect or an engineer, to complement, and then...
Hopefully an architect, right? Somebody with design.
That would be my first choice, would be an architect, but...
With city planning credentials.
If I may, as was outlined in when we did the Architectural Design Manual Task Force back in 2007, which sits on the shelf collecting dust, but the membership at there was designed, was an architect, an engineer, a realtor, a building contractor, business owner or operator in Rehoboth Beach, a representative from the Historical Society, this was again focused on residential, not on commercial, but on residential. A representative from each of the five neighborhoods identified in the CDP, Old Rehoboth, Rehoboth Heights, Country Club Estates, School View and the Pines, Planning Commissioner member, and a City Commission member.
I mean, frankly, the spirit of that feels like it should be applied here.
Well, again, that's the reason, and I go back to Senior Citizen Day here, but this is what I wrote in 2007, laying out specifically in the resolution of what was to be the goal, what was to be attained, and how to reach that. So, and this, again, was a manual, architectural manual suggested, it's a picture book, but if this is what we really want to do, and looking to the future and design of the city, and it will impact the zoning code, I think a resolution that really lays this out, that sets the foundation for what we want to accomplish and what we're looking forward, that's what needs to be done, and we can all, I think we have agreement or consensus that we want to move forward with this, but with a little more definition.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's perfectly fine, we can definitely bring a resolution to the next regular meeting, and in the meantime, with the positive reception, we'll move forward on trying to solidify these plans for you, but we'll bring it in a resolution form, and then you can approve that and memorialize, and we'll look at the makeup of the group as well.
So are we deferring then?
Yes.
Did any members of the public want to say anything? Harvey and...
Harvey Schulman, Henlopen Avenue. As I said at a prior meeting, I completely support this, and thank the city for taking the initiative, but I really do have the same comment or questions that Commissioner Sharp and others had, because as I read the representation on this, there are four government representatives, two from the Board of Commissioners, and two from the Planning Commission. So then, I can understand in the third point, is it a total of three representatives, and two are from the business development community, and the third is from another, is another local representative, or are there three? I don't know by the third point here.
It's two plus one. I mean, there's no other way to read that.
Well...
It says "and other."
I think it was already stated that that wasn't the intent.
Okay, so then that gets to the point, then the other local representative, I don't know, I mean, someone said, the business community, or an architect, or whatever. As I look at this, it could be, there's really no guarantee of unaffiliated citizen representation. You know, Main Street has something, the builder development community has something, the last item here is two business and/or citizen representatives, so I come back to Commissioner Gossett's point, you know, I don't know why it doesn't say a representative from the Village Improvement Association, or the Historical Society, or whatever, you know, because, I mean, we all have vested interests in this, but I think we should make sure, because this is going to be, you know, a hotly debated topic, that there are citizen representatives who really don't have a development interest, they don't have a business interest, they just live here. And as for a professional, you know, you can put on here that, you know, an architect or engineer, or somebody from experience, but again, you know, if it's someone who's doing architectural plans for things in the city, you know, you have their expertise, but it's an economic interest at stake. So I compliment you, I think it's all a great idea, I just ask that it be somewhat more representative, and for the record, I have no interest in serving on this, Mayor, so this does not affect me personally. Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey.
Mayor, just a quick...
Walter, come ahead.
Just on the last point, two business and/or could be read, is that four?
It could be, it really, I think the spirit of how this was drafted was to allow for flexibility on what kind of applications you get, because ultimately, this board is appointing those people, so it just depends what applications you get, but we can definitely narrow it to be more specific, if you want a specific number.
I think y'all need to come back to the commissioners with a solid, well-balanced group, and sell it.
Maybe with more specificity.
Yes, and sell it to the commissioners of exactly why you want it that way.
Yeah. And that may be the use of Wallace Montgomery helping develop that, they've done this before.
Walter?
Walter Birmingham, on 23 Henlopen Avenue. I read this before I came here, I read it last night. Is Mary Ellen a certified planner?
Yes.
She has the credentials?
Yeah, she has the AICP certification, that's what a planner or a community development person that works in that field...
I'm sorry, I did not understand that, say that again, if you don't mind.
So it's the designation that someone who has a background in planning or community development has?
Does she have certificates? She's certified?
With the American Institute.
No, we don't have to assume that, all due respect, Mr. Tetter, you don't meet the qualifications for the advertisement, so I'm trying to find out, does she have recognized standards to be a certified planner?
Yes, through the American Institute of Certified Planners.
Thank you very much.
All right, John, come in.
John Dewey, City resident, speaking only for myself, this conversation, this process is long overdue. I've been following this discussion since back when former Commissioner Kalusi had a task force going. I strongly encourage you to come back with a better-rounded group of individuals to participate, so this is really collaborative, bottom-up process. The process, and it may have been because it wasn't ready for primetime, when Commissioner Kalusi was out attempting to sell and build support from it, it felt then like decisions had been made about what the design elements were going to be, what neighborhoods were going to be impacted, and again, it may have been issues with the rollout, but it wound up leading to a lot of community opposition to the proposal. It's overdue that we look at this. I usually don't say this, let's take time to get it right. I've been very frustrated of late, trying to get some things accomplished, and perhaps some other people are as well, but this really would impact the face of the community for 100 years or more to come, so take the time to get it right, build a consensus, get some additional folks on that group. Thank you.
Mayor, sorry, sir, just want, I know this is unconventional, but can I ask him a question? Quick one. Why is it that you really support this? Like, what's underneath that? Why do you think we need this? I agree, I want to support this too, but you've been thinking about this a lot longer than I have.
Well, in order to do that, I have to carefully remind everybody that I do sit on the Planning Commission, and so part of this will sound vague, because I want to avoid tipping my hand how I may feel about any particular proposals. Okay, so that said...
So are you, were you speaking to us as a planning commissioner?
That's, I am not.
Okay.
That's why I have to be very thoughtful about how I phrase this, and so if I sound indistinct, and you look for precision, I may not be able to give you that precision, as long as we understand each other. Okay, so recently, the Planning Commission, and this is out in the public record, reviewed the proposal for the open lots on Rehoboth Avenue that were formerly planned for clear space. It became a very complex discussion, because city code doesn't speak to how to do that. So you had to very carefully respect both commercial code and residential code, and figure out how to get those two things to work together, and what having this addressed as a mixed zoning would provide the Planning Commission, as well as the Board of Commissioners, with much more specific guidance on, A, what is appropriate for size, scale, design. I think that the, if you want to look at something that people really fell in love with, go back to the public record of the presentations for the mixed-use buildings that are planned in that 400 block of Rehoboth Avenue. They are just exceptionally well-designed, and taking a look at those plans would, I think, give, it would just be well worth your time to look at them.
I think you said something that we all should pay very careful attention to, and I think I agree with it, but I think it's easy to overlook it. You said, this is going to impact this town for the next 100 years.
Yeah.
And I think that's really well said, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. With that, we'll move on. Everybody there? We'll move on to the next item of business, which is the first item of new business presentation by the Rehoboth Beach Police Department on the creation of a police advisory committee as requested, required by law.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and the general public. The intent of this evening is to introduce and creation of the Public Advisory Committee as required by law. Just a little bit of background, on August 7, 2023, the Governor signed HB 206 into law. Among other things, HB 206 required that all Delaware police departments establish police accountability committees, or otherwise known as PACs. So what is some of the purpose or the intent? Is to provide advice to departments on policy, training, and other issues relating to or affecting the department and the communities served by those departments, such as Rehoboth Beach. We anticipate it will result in a greater transparency, information gathering and sharing, education, and community engagement. That is our intent, and I certainly think it would occur. Today, I have attached Policy 208, that was written by the Rehoboth Beach Police Department as part of our policies and procedures that we keep up with when we come up with, well, just our policies in general. So through that, I'm just going to talk about what the intent and how this would work. The PAC shall consist of no less than five members, it can obviously grow, I think, what I would like to start out is with five members, and then once we have those members chaired, after we speak of our intent and know where we want to go, we can always sit there and grow that. The Chief of Police may add additional members as deemed appropriate, it is recommended that the members be diverse in background to provide the largest representing, representation of our community. Members shall rotate to allow different perspectives to introduce to the committee. The Chief, for his designee, shall chair the committee. So how would we select some of these members? Recommendations for members of the PAC shall be made by the Chief of Police. The Chief and Mayor shall be responsible for making a final selection of any recommended board members. How the law was written, it doesn't necessarily say I have to go through the city officials to select that, but I thought it was important to bring others involved to make that decision to go forward, so I just put in the Mayor with that. The members shall, we shall consider members for their professionalism, integrity, and commitment to their community, to our community when making a selection, and they should consider input from community members, other city officials, and department members. Members of the PAC shall serve a term of one to three years, which shall be renewable to the discretion of the Chief of Police. Nonofficer member of the PAC shall be required within one year of deployment to complete 20 hours of community training with the department. That's actually required by law, they have to have training. And now, the training can be in-house, we can go on field trips, and different things to give perspectives. The Chief, the Mayor, and the majority vote by the PAC may remove any members for cause before the end of the term, so... But I will sit there, so when I'm not reading this, pervading the policy that's in front of you, the recommendations to consider for the committee of membership members should be at least one of the following: Resident of the city of Rehoboth Beach, a religious leader from the community, which is required by the law, a member of the community, or an immediate family member or caretaker, who have been impacted directly by a juvenile or adult criminal justice system, and that's required to have somebody that was impacted, a member of the business community, a member of a local community based on social service, or a nonofficer member of the criminal justice community. Let's see, just trying to skip through, I guess the big thing I would make out to let you guys know, it is a formal meeting, we are required to have, keep minutes, so we will have an involved to be there at our meetings, so it will be recorded, and FOIA is complied. I'd be glad to answer any questions or concerns, or anything you think I maybe missed, I probably got long-winded, since it's been a long evening for you guys.
Go ahead.
Since it's the law, we have to do this, obviously. I guess, under the following or recommendations, it says a religious leader from the community, and it refers to community, 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 and then a member of a local community-based social service organization. Is it inferred that that community is the city of Rehoboth Beach? Or is that the greater area?
I would not, talking to other chiefs and talking to, you know, Tony Jones' office and other people that drafted this, and legislators somewhere that this came about, I would sit there and say, no, and that's not a required one, so obviously it's just one that could grow, but it could be, it's not sent there, taken away, but I don't, I think really this is really wanting the community that lives here to be part of it, and to, not, I don't want to get confused about other places that have overwatches and things like that, it's really a partnership, you know, review policies, procedures, and see how we can all work together, and kind of partner, be a partner.
And I guess the other question, I maybe address the solicitor with this, this seems to be an independent committee of the police department, correct?
Correct.
So I question, and just looking for explanation, and here it says, "when making a selection, the Chief and the Mayor should," and then it says, "the Chief and the Mayor." So I'm confused or concerned if this is an independent body making decisions or recommendations to the police department, which is a unique, one of the most unique departments that we have in the city. I'm just concerned or curious as to that relationship with the Mayor being involved with this, if there are recommendations that come back that need revisions or discussions by the commission to change code, or something of that nature, I'm just, I just want to explore that, that comes to my mind.
Yeah, absolutely. You are.
I will say, I say that's not the intent of the law at all, oh, it's really, again, is, I just thought, when I, the Chief of Police supposed to form the committees and put the group together, I just, I could take, sit, the Mayor out of that ad, and not have a second set of eyes, or whatever, to bring back. Any policy or changes, this board has no voting rights, or I'm not really looking for that, if something came up in a policy or procedure that the police department would need, I would come forward through the proper chain to bring that forward. I would come forward through the proper chain to bring that forth if it had to do with a city ordinance or something to be changed. I hear what you're saying, though. I get it.
I just, you know, you're, you're, you're employed by the city manager. So I'm just, again, I'm just questioning it. It could be perfectly fine. There's no issues or what have you, but it just, it just kind of stuck out to me. I'm not questioning the Mayor as a individual by any means, but just that relationship.
I, I actually, I see what you're saying, and I actually read some other departments that were putting theirs together, and they kind of mentioned Mayor, whatever, but this, but some of those departments report straight to the Mayor. So I certainly could change that to the city manager, if that would make people feel more comfortable.
I, I have no suggestion on that. I just have that concern, and if, if it could be resolved, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely. I'll take a look at that. The starting point, just because they're making recommendations, FOIA would apply in every sense of the word. So if the Mayor's involved, FOIA would apply to any of those communications or meetings, or meeting minutes, or agendas, that sort of thing. But I'll take a look at that specific question.
Thank you.
Yeah, because just, yeah, because they are advisory. They're not.
Chief, thanks. Just a curiosity. In the agenda item report on background, it talks about the Governor having signed this House Bill 206 on August 7th of 2023. Are we a little bit behind, or are we right on schedule?
We're right on schedule. So there are a few, quite honestly, Sussex County's kind of been better represented getting this done because I won't call a department out or agency, but they expanded a lot more detail than, I think, the Governor and legislators that brought this up thought it would be. So they said, started bringing back, this is what we mean by, because they had the Attorney General's Office now that's looking at use of forces, and so they don't want other committees to have another, because there's police officers bill rights going through other hoops and where this could expire to. So attendance, again, just tried to bring the community involved, build those relationships. I think we have a great one, Rehoboth Beach, but why can't, we can do better. We can always expand that. So I think that is truly bringing us to a partnership and to actually see the things that we do and bring forward. And maybe we both will learn a little something about each other in the process.
Thank you, Chief.
There's a requirement that there be a religious person?
A religious group, yes, that was legislatively mandated, yes.
The state of Delaware mandated that?
Yes.
Okay, so we've done away with separation of church and state. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Members of the public? Anybody else up here? All right, so you're going to get to confer with Alex on whether to take the Mayor out of the picture or not, then?
Yes.
I don't care one way or the other. All right, thank you, Chief. With that, we're moving along. The next piece, we've done Clear Space. We're going to go on to performance evaluation of Alex Burns', role as city solicitor. You've got a timeline up on the screen there. I've been here 26 years in town. Walter Speakman was, was the city solicitor when I first got here. Then Glenn Mendalis came along around 2006, and stayed to 2023, so that's about 17 years Glenn Mendalis was here. Alex Burns, as noted on the timeline, started interning in September 2022, and we appointed him as the city solicitor in November 6, 2023. And at some point, the Board of Commissioners said it's appropriate to advise the city solicitor of job expectations, and, and that they wanted, would want to evaluate his performance periodically. So Evan and I were tasked with developing job expectations. Afterward, we did that. We met with Alex to review. It's now been, actually, about nine months, I think, since we appointed him, but it's been six months since, since we gave him that expectations talk. So, so now, tonight, is the opportunity for the Board of Commissioners to offer any evaluations of Alex and his role as city solicitor. It's also an opportunity, if you'd like to, for the Board of Commissioners to edit or add to the list of expectations so that we're ready for the next evaluation. This is also an opportunity, if you want, if you wanted to, to talk about process for evaluations. I was just going to review the expectations and, that we came up with. Again, this is what Alex, at the time, he was interim city manager. I met with him, and we created these expectations, fell along some key words of timeliness, communications, guidance, behavior, initiative, meetings, and miscellaneous. And, you know, those all have to do with behaviors, or his roles, or duties. And so Evan had to leave, so he's not here. We can't quiz him on what his thoughts are. But I basically took a look at giving Alex a pass/fail or needs improvement type of grading system. And, you know, timeliness is, is always a consideration. It's one of those things that's difficult to do. For instance, sometimes we're having trouble of late getting our support documents done on time. Well, unfortunately, a lot of the support documents have to go through Alex, but it's not all his fault, because those of us that sponsor support documents oftentimes don't get them to him in a timely fashion, so we can't be real mad at that. But he does know from this list of expectations that that is very important, and he does a good job, I believe, in bending over backwards and working weekends to try to get the support documents as soon as we can. In terms of guidance, one of the things he does is provide legal advice to the Board of Commissioners, of course, building and licensing assistance, and city manager, city manager, and others as requested. And also, he helps us with FOIA awareness and guidance. And the current process that we use is Evan Taylor and I create the agendas, and then they get sent to Alex so that he can review them for language, so that we make sure that we're, we've got the right language, including the right rationales if we are citing rationale for going into executive session. The initiatives is something that, that I have, maybe needs improvement on, but the initiatives is, and he's been doing very good for the Commissioners, for me, anticipating something, or sending me a note during meetings, and also downstairs, about things that need, that crop up, that need immediate detention. I think where, where maybe it needed improvement is just when you sit in on Board of Adjustment and Planning Commission meetings, want to make sure that you, you're not bashful there and are willing to speak up and support Matt, or question Matt, or something, as is appropriate. So I'm largely very happy with the new city solicitor. I was not on board when Glenn Mendalis was appointed city solicitor in 2006. I was out in the audience, and, you know, young, Glenn was a young man at that time, you know? So he's matured a lot, and I look forward to continue working with Alex and as he matures in this position. We can ask for input from Taylor, if you like, but otherwise, I give you this opportunity to offer whatever you'd like.
Well, before that, do you want to hear from us?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Are you representing?
No, that's, that's who I was referencing.
I thought you meant Alex.
No, 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 no.
Just, yep.
We'll get, we'll let him have an opportunity last.
So I should probably speak last, because I'm the newest on here, so I'll defer to the older folks. I don't mean older in age, although that too, but older in experience, but I do have some comments.
Go ahead, go ahead. Pull that microphone a little closer, and go ahead.
So I know early on in his tenure, Alex, Evan had some concerns about timeliness of responses. And I don't think it was in, due to our, you know, our, our performance, if you will, meaning the cities. I assume that's all, those wrinkles have been ironed out. Alex would know better.
Let me answer, because I'm in the same boat with, with Evan on that, and the answer is yes, we're doing a lot, lot, lot better.
Okay.
At the beginning, you're absolutely right. I think, I think, forgive me, but I think it was maybe being overwhelmed, and, you know, as soon as he came on board, he was still doing
It's all fair.
stuff for other cities and stuff and everything. So, so we had to learn to work with him also, and had to be mindful. We need to get him stuff in a timely fashion, so that he could meet our expectation and get it back in a timely fashion.
Great. I just, it stuck in my mind that Evan had raised that in one of our, our meetings, and so.
Yes, absolutely.
The other thing that, that sticks in my mind is that we have been found in violation of FOIA a couple of times.
Well, let me, let me interject there. All those violations of FOIA preceded him. He hadn't, he had nothing.
No, that's, I don't think that's.
Is that true?
No.
There was the, the city manager FOIA violation. There was the city manager-related FOIA violation. I, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, no, so listen, I mean, we're, we're having a public discussion about performance, which is a little awkward, but I guess it's what we do. But it's, it has to be said, right? I mean, we have had violations of FOIA, and you are our FOIA lawyer.
Yeah, that's a fair concern.
So we have to be better at this.
Yep.
And I, I think, my own advice to you is, just be bolder with us. Speak up. Don't be shy.
Absolutely. No, thank you.
Right? I think you do give good advice, but sometimes you're shy to give it. And you can't be with us. That's where a sledgehammer is needed.
Right, yeah.
Maybe not in our actions, but that's it from my side. I, I've enjoyed working with you. I think you're very responsive.
Any, anybody else?
I have no way to comment, because I have had no interactions, really, with Alex other than mostly 99.9% right here in public. And what I have had to say to him, he could repeat back to me, couldn't you, Alex?
Close to the mic, speak up.
Do that louder. I'm serious. Get close to the mic, speak up, hold the presence. Exactly what Commissioner Preston says it in a more soft way than I do, that taking charge is always a good thing, if you're confident in what you're saying. So I wish you the best of luck. The only question I would have for you to think about as time goes on, it's not a question for you to answer, it is to always think about, are you guiding us into any litigation? And I know you were painfully aware of that sort of role, and doing everything you can to steer us clear. So I thank you for your efforts. I think following in the footsteps of someone who had been here for such a long period of time is a very, those are very big shoes to fill, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else?
I just, I've had very little interchange with Alex, but it's all been a very positive experience. And I look forward to further working with you. One of the, the tools that we had used in the past, and it's really not been for a evaluation or what have you, was that every year, when we have the audit done, the city solicitor prepares a list of actions that they have taken over that year as part of the, part of the audit. And that has been very helpful in the past to review the actions of the city solicitor, the actions, and what has been transpired over that period of time. So I think that also should be looked at as part of the evaluation in, in future years. You know, I, I know you have met with this to design a performance expectations or what have you. I think this is kind of clunky. I don't know if there's a better system out there, or anything of that nature, but, and I just think that the process itself needs to be a little more investigated and move forward in a different manner. But that key audit letter that is produced by the city solicitor, I think, would be very helpful in beginning discussions, because it shows us what is, what has occurred.
Commissioner, just a question for you. Audit, do you mean the financial audit?
Yes, the financial audit. As part of that is required for the city solicitor to report back all actions taken in that year that the audit is covering.
Actions taken by the city?
By the city solicitor.
I see.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I've also had limited interaction with Alex, but those issues where I have had interaction, I believe he's fulfilled all of the various issues that you've identified here. The one thing I guess I would agree with Commissioner Preston is to, you know more than most of us up here, if not all of us up here. And so I would suggest that in terms of communication, maybe being more confident or being direct with your advice would be helpful.
Thank you. Anybody?
I'll just add that, that the occasions where I've specifically asked Alex about certain things we were dealing with, he always answered my question. So I think that's something, you know? And I mean that from somebody who has no understanding of legal things, anyway. But, but by all means, I, I have, I think, a good rapport, and I, it's not anything that I could offer that would be of any way would help you improve. Okay, you gotta do that on your own. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Go to the city manager. Have you only known him three-plus months?
Right, so I have been, you know, with the city just over 90 days, so of course, you know, but I do work with Alex hand-in-hand, you know, on nearly a daily basis. And I do first want to say, the reason that this is being conducted in public this evening is because Alex was willing to do that, be put in the hot seat, so that we are in accordance with FOIA. So that was, I commend him on that, as someone that was evaluated in public for my last three evaluations. So first, I do want to say that Alex is very prompt with responding back to me or staff that, you know, emails or phone calls. He is very prompt. And I will say that he definitely safeguards the city's, you know, finances related to his hours and how he accounts for those hours, so I do appreciate that as well. I think everyone should have goals for the future, so, you know, continuing that responsiveness would be very helpful, continuing to know the ins and outs of the Charter and code. So, you know, when questions arise, that, you know, you'd have a quick answer, and, and I really appreciate all of your assistance.
Very good. And would you like to?
Oh, Mayor.
You want to say something?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't chime in at all yet. And I, again, my, my, like everyone else, I think my interactions have been fairly limited. But I, I do think that Alex has, has done a good job, for the most part. And I, I think, like everyone else said, being a little bolder, louder, having a little more confidence, being a, being a little heavier-handed with us sometimes, I think, would be good. I, I do, and I definitely have some concerns overall, I think, and it's not related to Alex, per se, but just sort of the position we've been in with not adhering to the Charter, the FOIA violations. We had the abandonment issue on, on Baltimore Avenue. So I think overall, I've, I've got some frustrations, and a lot of them, you know, are, happened before, before Alex. Which leads me to, I think, that we're having this conversation, which is great, and I don't think we've ever done one before, but we also haven't changed law firms. But we also haven't changed law firms in 20 years. And the fact that we haven't really done an evaluation or got out for an RFP for legal services concerns me. I hope that's something we consider in the future. It certainly has nothing to do with Alex or, or your capabilities, but I just think in general practice, every couple of years, we should be doing that to make sure that we're remaining competitive and but, but overall I, I've enjoyed working with Alex. I thank you for being up here and keeping us in line. Thank you.
Give you the opportunity to retort.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for the thoughtful comments. It's an honor to serve in this role and I've learned every day. Every single day I've learned something new and I'm sure that'll keep continuing. Look forward to learning more and, you know, setting goals is important to me. And I want to get better and be the best I can at this role. And it's really an honor. So thank you.
And we're, we're gonna have you talk in there until it's too loud.
Too loud?
Actually, that was perfect.
That was, that was. That was perfect. Very good. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I have just a really small thing.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's just from an efficiency standpoint. And I thought this might appeal to both the city manager and to Alex. And it's just a thought. I mentioned it at the workshop on August 5th, that if we change some of the language to have more flexibility at the workshops on something very, very simple, such as getting our questions answered about paving, a paving contract and water main replacement contract. Once those questions were answered, had we noticed that item as a discuss and consider, it might've been in the best interest of the city to move things on more quickly, to have been able to vote at that time. And I know Commissioner Preston has mentioned, can we not just do some things from an efficiency standpoint? I don't have a dog in the fight anymore, but I just wanted to reinforce that, that if you think about it and think it works, that's great. If you, I have no ownership if you decide that's not the way you want to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
We should go that way.
With that, we're moving on to the next item of business, which is discuss and consider a resolution setting a public hearing to amend chapter 270, sections 270 dash four, definitions related to trailers and 270 dash 39, temporary structures prohibited, exceptions. Patrick, is that your topic?
This is from the solicitor.
So do you want to explain what this is, if you don't mind?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a resolution to set a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending chapter 270 zoning. And the purpose of this is essentially just to be a companion piece to the trailers ordinance amending chapter 92 that we discussed earlier. So I can go over it quickly.
Yes, please.
Yeah, very quickly. So it, it just cleans up a couple of things in the code. The first is that there's a reference to the zoning code in the language that was adopted earlier.
Need to go anywhere?
Yeah, scroll down a little bit. Keep going. So I can start there. There's a definition of trailer. I added that in to coincide with chapter 92 because the word trailer is used in the zoning code, but it is not defined in the zoning code. So I just wanted to be clear what it meant. And it's defined in chapter 92 as every vehicle without mode of power designed to carry property or passengers wholly on its own structure and to be drawn by a motor vehicle. And so then I just added a few examples after that. And that's just to clear up the definition of trailer to make sure everything's on the same page. And then if you scroll down a little further, Mayor. So there's a reference in the ordinance that was adopted earlier. There's a reference 270 dash 39. And I just wanted to make sure that those two sections were on the same sheet of music. The two, 92 dash 38, one of the subsections under section A stated that a trailer could be on private property up 30 days and thereafter you could seek a special exception from the Board of Adjustment. But this section says you can't keep a trailer at all on private property. So the section 92, 38 was giving you up to 30 days to keep it on private property. I just wanted to make sure they were on the same page. So it's just cleaning it up. It's not intended to change anything.
So any questions or comments by the commissioners to start with on this topic?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So what happens, so this will happen at a future meeting with a different set of commissioners. What happens if the resolution is not adopted?
So there, there would be an inconsistency there.
That was my fear and that's why I asked us to defer action on the previous item.
But you said if the resolution is not adopted.
Correct.
The resolution
No, no.
The resolution is to set a public hearing.
No, sorry. The, the changes that he's made
Correct.
Have to be adopted.
I would recommend that they be adopted. It's just to avoid the possibility of an inconsistency.
Correct. I understand.
I hear you though. Anybody else up here?
Vassili.
If not, Harvey, go ahead.
Harvey Schulman, Henlopen Avenue. First of all, to make things clear, all the people earlier who complained about property rights and taking away their trailers and this and that, I'm one of the only people left, okay? And I'm here because of the point you raised, Commissioner Preston. Almost every municipality around the country has a separate zoning ordinance and a parking ordinance. And they have independent sources of authority and they have independent effects. It is not always true that something that's permitted by a zoning ordinance is permitted by a parking ordinance. Not everything has to be in a zoning ordinance. There are things that relate to, and I think the city solicitor would agree, you know, public health, safety and welfare that can be dealt with in a parking ordinance. And that's what you did. Now, I think it's a better idea to have these consistent. But the fact that there may be a different definition doesn't mean that the parking ordinance is any less effective. It's the parking ordinance.
It does mean that there's a conflict.
It's not a conflict.
No, I'm sorry. That's not the case.
If I may finish. So it's, it's not a conflict. It's just there's two sections of the code dealing with
It's a conflict of laws.
Two different things that, that, that set different standards. But more directly to the point, this really grew out of an interpretation, and I'm not going to get into the details here, but interpretation of the zoning code that to my knowledge, having lived here for 39 years, was never interpreted the way it was in the past year. And that is the restriction in 270, 39 regarding trailers. It applied to trailers. And it is true that trailers was not defined in the zoning code. But trailers was not only defined in the parking ordinance, but trailers is defined in the state law. So what triggered all of this is this interpretation because for years, when, as I said earlier, when a trailer would park, the city manager would call up and it would be worked out and there wouldn't be a problem. But now, now we have this problem. So we have this interpretation and that's what's generating this. If you look at the word trailers that the city solicitor has in this and you see what it says in the state law, he, all he did is says trailers, you know, is defined generally. And then it says includes. But includes is actually, it's a nice thing. It gives people examples. But that doesn't mean when it didn't say includes, that just because something was in the list of boat trailer, house trailer, you know, utility trailer, camping trailer, that didn't mean that it wasn't covered. So I, I, I appreciate your point earlier about the camping trailers. And as someone who very much supported what was voted on, I pledge that if any of you or the city solicitor wants to sit down and talk about how in the future something can be put in the code to deal with it, it's a reasonable request.
Thank you. Thank you, Harvey. Anybody else in the public? If not, then the next step would be to decide what to do. Does anybody want to make a motion to adopt? If so, I want to make sure, sure the dates on page two of the resolution include this, that today is the 16th day of August 2024. And that the public hearing, if we go forward with this, would be conducted on the 20th of September at 2:00 PM.
Mayor, if I may make a comment beforehand, one thing that I would ask, some strong consideration be given to is agenda management. I think being here for five hours and the robustness of this particular agenda is just not where we should be.
Agree.
So in setting this public hearing, the 20th is also the squaring in of new commissioners. There's other, other aspects that will take place that day with ceremonies and what have you.
Yeah.
So I would certainly suggest that the 20th not be the public hearing for this particular action and give very close
What's in October?
Agenda management for in the future.
What's in October? What's the regular meeting?
And as was noted by Commissioner Sharp earlier, depending on language, it could be voted on or held at a workshop.
October 18. Let's go with that. Next time we'll reach out farther with our agenda planner.
What's today?
18th of October. Way to do this and say to be determined? So that we can look at our calendar better? I'd rather do, again, do, can we just say to be determined? Maybe, maybe I look at my, my workshop schedule and it's, I've got more opportunity for that than I do for my regular meeting.
We could modify it so you could set it for the workshop or the regular and then we can go back and change it.
Let's just do it for the October 18th. If something comes up, then we've got time to change it.
Can I follow up on something Commissioner Preston brought up? So there will be a new set, there will be a new board sitting here. And so if, so we vote on a, a public hearing on this and then if the resolution doesn't pass or this zoning piece doesn't pass, is it in conflict with what was passed before?
No.
And what happens?
I don't think conflict would be the right term. It's more, this is an attempt to clarify.
I know we were trying to clarify trailer language, right?
So just making sure that nine, chapter 92 and chapter 270 speak to each other. We're just making sure that they're on the same page. An interpretation can be made that they are, but we just want to remove any doubt.
But if there was a different vote taken and it is, comes out different than the initial vote, what happens?
Then we have the, hope for the interpretation being correct.
It opens up the possibility that there's a conflict between the two and
And then it's revisited.
Revisited, what do you mean?
Well, that's what I, that's, when you brought that up, I didn't think about that.
Somebody could challenge a decision made under the parking.
Right. That's, that's what I mean. Because there'd be a new set of people, a new board seated essentially.
So Patrick, you're
In our rush today, this is what we've done. It's a mistake.
Patrick, do you want to make a motion with the date, the 18th of October, 2:00 PM?
Not particularly.
You don't want to make the motion or they don't like the date?
I don't mind it falls to me. This was a brought forward by the solicitor.
Would anybody like to make a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution to set a public hearing on the 18th of October.
2:00 PM?
Is that enough?
I got a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bunky Markert and a second by Commissioner Tony Sharp to set a public hearing in this matter for the 18th of October at 2:00 PM. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Mayor, I abstain for the same reasons as earlier.
Which is what?
I, I think it was rushed and, and we've not fully vetted both of those ordinances.
Okay. All right. So it's still a six, six, six yeses and one abstention. And the motion carries. The public hearing is set. With that, Commissioner, announcements or comments? Don, you had something?
Yeah, I, I am deeply disturbed by our behavior. The possibility that any commissioner would use their seat as a way to affect a neighbor is unconscionable to me. And that was alleged today. Whether it's true or not, I don't know. But there were changes made to documents late in the game. We shouldn't act this way. We also shouldn't disclose things that are discussed in executive session. And we know that people do. I have asked the solicitor, what is, what can we do about bad behavior? There are actions we can take. And if we continue to act this way, there is one commissioner who will pursue those actions. And that's me. I didn't join this group. I didn't want to be a part of this group to participate in these kinds of behaviors. It's not how public officials should act. So for the record, I wanted to say this. I, for one, will not stand by and let these things happen. Thank you for inter
All right. Thank you. Anybody else says a comment?
I would just like to address that. The addition of the so-called slipping it in late was done not on my behalf at all. I had no knowledge of it. It was done between the solicitor and the city manager, as he says, to clean up the code. I take it as a personal insult that you think that I would stoop to doing this. I have never mentioned that trailer next to me and I never will. I have never complained and I never will. But to think that you feel that I would change my ethics of what I do at this commission meeting is personally insulting. And to be called mafia tactics by other members.
Fair enough, Patrick. But I'm going to tell you that I have emails from people who I know were in communication with you, who directly linked this to you.
Oh, I will admit to the trailer, but not to personally camper trailers, not at all.
No, this was about
Let us not, this is not the place for discussion of this. I'm sorry. But I'm, I'm highly, highly insulted. And if you accuse me of, of this type of thing, then yes, we will go further with this.
All right, gentlemen. Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments? Bunky?
I had a comment I wanted to make. I'm sorry it's such a late time and I'm sorry it's, we've had a long day and it's been very taxing and, and disruptive. But I just wanted to send off our two commissioners, Tim Bennett and Tony Sharp, and thank them for their service.
for their service. I owe you both.
Got one more meeting to come to, though.
Do I?
But thank you.
Well, hopefully they come to the two workshops.
I would also like to extend my thanks to Commissioner Sharp and Commissioner Bennett for the service and commitment that they've done for the past three years. And I'm sorry that you're unable to overcome your frustrations with this, frustrations level with this board to run for another term. Thank you.
With that, we'll move on, review future meeting dates. Everybody can go to the website and see them. Citizen comment for things off topic, is there anybody? If not, then I would, we have one last bit of business, which is to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters in which the names, competency, and abilities of individual employees are discussed pursuant to 29 Del C, Section 10,004B9. Can I get a motion?
No.
So moved.
You can't get a motion.
Oh, he just, he just did.
No, I didn't make a motion. I said no.
No, Don did.
So moved. If we've got to do it, we've got to do it.
We don't have to do it today. Where's the fire? No.
I don't even know what it's about.
It's about Taylor's 90 Day, and it does not need to be done today with the high level of frustration and annoyance. If you want me in a room tonight at 20, almost 7:00, I dare you.
I'll get you out by 8:00.
Seven, oh, Jesus. Jesus, Mary, and Joseph.
Are you, are you, are you okay with deferring?
Yeah.
Are you okay with deferring?
No, I think we should do it. I mean, I might as well go out with a bang. It's almost 8:00.
Well, no, if it's going to take 15 minutes, I'd rather do it now than come back another day.
I think, I think we need to cool down, is what I would suggest you all do.
Well, Patrick, Patrick's the one that called for it. Would you mind if we waited for him to come in the room?
He left.
I don't think Patrick's coming back.
Patrick's gone, Mayor.
Oh, he picked, oh, I didn't know that. So let's.
Leslie comes back for his paper.
All right, well, we're going to defer on that one.
I'll withdraw the motion.
We'll defer on that to another time. With that, I adjourn the meeting at 7:33 PM. Thank you very much.